Welcome, everyone.
Recording in progress.
There it is. I now call the November 26, 2024 Special City Council Meeting to order. I'd like to remind everyone that this special meeting is a continuation of the November 19 regular meeting, which was postponed for continuation tonight, November 26, due to interruption from the regional storm and related power outages, including outages here at City Hall. Tonight's meeting will resume where we left off on November 19, which is Item 7A, the Public Hearing for the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Final Draft and Associated Draft Bothell Municipal Code Development Regulation Amendments. And we are low on seats. So I just want everybody to know that we're actually broadcasting the meeting in the lobby as well. And if you're signed up to speak and you're in the lobby, you're totally welcome to come in. So be wherever you are comfortable. I am going to click over here to 7A. Oh, yeah. Oh, that's right. Thank you. Well, tonight is a continuation of last night's meeting. We will take a moment to take a roll call of the council members by position number. Please say here when the city clerk calls your name.
Thank you, Mayor Thompson. Councilmember Zornz?
Here.
Mayor Thompson?
Here.
Councilmember Alderks?
Here.
Councilmember Kerd?
Here.
Councilmember Manke?
Here.
Councilmember Dodd?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Al Cabra?
Here.
All present.
Thank you very much. Knowing we're starting off with a continuation of the public hearing, I'd like to reiterate some guidelines. For remote meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently, mute your microphone when not speaking, and for council attending remotely, use the raise hand feature when you wish to speak. First item of business is 7A, the Continued Public Hearing on the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Final Draft and Associated Draft Bothell Municipal Code Development Regulation Amendments.
As the public... There's a separate agenda posted for tonight's meeting. This is a separate council meeting. While the public hearing can be continued, this is a separate public meeting, a public comment. This is a separate city council meeting. You cannot continue the last one because a separate agenda was posted. If you choose to do that, you're violating state law, in my opinion.
As the public hearing has remained open since last week, we will pick up where we left off and begin public hearing testimony from individuals who did not get the chance to opportunity, who did not get the opportunity to speak before the meeting was interrupted last week. If you did not get a chance to speak at last week's public hearing, this will be your chance to do so. City clerk?
Thank you, Mayor Thompson. Before we begin, I'd like to acknowledge that we received numerous written comments submitted by 3:00 PM last week for November 19. And those comments will be made part of the record, and they will be available when the minutes are published, all of those for the record. And additionally, any comments that were received, any written comments that were received since November 19 up until 3:00 today will also be made part of the record for tonight's meeting, and those will be published with the minutes for tonight's meeting. So with that said, I'm now going to call on the people that have signed up to speak before 3:00 today. If you were in the room and you did not get a chance to sign up to speak before 3:00, once we're through with all the people that did sign up, I will call in additional speakers. So with that, the first person I have to speak is Paula Quigg. Paula, are you in the room?
Yeah.
Please make your way to the podium and turn on the mic. There's a little button on the microphone.
Red means go.
While Paula's making her way up there, I will say that each speaker will receive three minutes to speak. We will be timed. Your light will be green, and when you have one minute left, it'll start blinking. Thirty seconds left, it'll turn yellow and red when you're done, and it will beep loudly. So go ahead, Paula.
All right. Good evening. My name is Paula Quigg. And thank you, councilmembers, for your service and for your attention to the concerns of Bothell citizens who are commenting during this meeting tonight, as well as those who testified last Tuesday online. We moved to our home in Bothell in 1996, and though some have made fun of Bothell's slogan for a day or a lifetime, that phrase is a reality for our family and for many, many of our neighbors and friends. We connected with and invested in our children's schools, our neighborhood, and have enjoyed our lifetime in Bothell. Our particular Maywood Hills neighborhood, the Crested Canyon Park, has enduring appeal. Of note are the sidewalks, lighting, roomy lots, cul-de-sacs that can handle our annual neighborhood barbecues, a directory of our neighborhood to share contact with each other. Yeah, we really do that. And walkable proximity to North Creek Forest, Canyon Park Middle School, and Maywood Hills Elementary. Oh, and the neighbors. Neighbors who pitch in to help repair mailboxes, paint the fence, take in each other's garbage bins, and feel comfortable for their kiddos to walk safely to school and play football together in the street. When we are folks who check in on each other, especially when it's icy or when the power's out. Speaking of the neighbors, there are 75 homes in the Crest neighborhood area. Many are longtime owners of at least 20 years. Several are original owners from the mid-1980s. This neighborhood is so desirable that several families have moved within the neighborhood to different homes. And at least two of those homes are now owned by adult children of former and current owners. Bothell is definitely a place to be for a lifetime. Our family has grown and changed during our 28 years here, and Bothell has grown and changed too. I understand that changes are inevitable, necessary, and very often beneficial to respond to an expanding population of our desirable region. And I understand that the council's task to adopt the urban growth plan to accommodate the population increase is a daunting one. But the scale of this proposed zoning change is not reasonable. Bothell does not need to be an overachiever in this area. If adopted, the impact of changing single-family zone neighborhoods to include six unit, multi-family structures with little or no setbacks and many more concerns fundamentally changes the desirability of the neighborhood. I oppose the proposed plan to severely epzone the many, many established Bothell neighborhoods in a manner that far exceeds the required action of the urban growth plan. Please hold a higher regard for the people of Bothell, your constituents, in your plans to comply with the urban growth requirements. Please continue the long-term, consider the long-term consequences of your decisions on the residents, and continue to submit a revised proposal that ensures Bothell remains a place to live for a lifetime. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm going to make the course of parliamentary procedure. We are not following the agenda as published. This is a violation of the Open Public Meetings Act. I reject your decision to follow policy instead of the law. We need public meetings. We need a public comments period as published by the agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Quinn. I'm going to ask the audience if you would please hold your applause to the end because we have so many people signed up to speak tonight, and it does kind of, you know, delay things. But with that said...
I propose a compromise.
Okay.
How about, as soon as somebody's done speaking, everybody is quiet, you call the next person, and then while that person is walking up, they can applaud. Does that sound okay?
Sure. I like that.
Okay. That way, we don't slow things down, and people don't feel like we're shushing them.
According to parliamentary procedure, you are required to follow the agenda as published.
Mark, your point is taken. Stop it immediately.
It's legal. We're using our...
I understand. We all heard it.
Next up, we have...
You don't follow the public agenda. This violates the Open Public Meetings Act.
Mr. Swanson, please, we're trying to get through some meeting.
I'm going to parliamentary procedure, city clerk.
The next speaker I have is Betty Chongabrock.
So I guess I know the directions. You've already given them?
Yes, you'll have three minutes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So greetings to the city council. This is my first time here, and I'm very excited to be here, to be able to say a few words. So I'm going to speak pretty quickly. I am neither for or against rezoning. I am disappointed, though, that so many, so few homeowners still don't know about this decision. Facts. Homes in Bothell are expensive. In Queensborough, new homes were priced at over $1 million a couple of years ago. They all sold. Average monthly rents on a home is $3,500. Research confirms that rezoning increases the value of a home and property. However, there are impacts when population increases take place due to rezoning. These are strains on infrastructure, traffic, parking, environment, schools, security, policing, social dynamics, and the disruption of community character. My thoughts on who profits and who loses by rezoning. It is easier to influence elderly to sell their homes out of fear, that is, sell before the apartments are built. Developers motivated by potential profits for financing large projects that destroy a good home for the purpose of building smaller new units on the same plots. Each new unit may cost the new homeowner slightly less than the selling price of the demolished home, yet it represents a desirable profit margin for investors who are selling multiple new homes instead of, in place of the old one. It is big business for banks, mortgage companies, demolitions done on a citywide scale. The losers are the homeowners who sell out because of fear. And the young ones who are attempting to buy new dwellings cannot afford these prices. Actually, the losers are all of the Bothellites, who will endure the ongoing citywide changes such as tax increases imposed due to rezoning. If future apartments complexes replace existing homes, those who profit are landlords who can charge $2,000 to $4,000 a month. Diversity and equity may not be achieved due to these in higher costs. I urge the city council to continue seeking advice from wider ranges of institutions across the country. They have accumulated knowledge and experience. If DEI is the intent of the council, what is now required is that you listen closely and thoughtfully to those who are directly impacted by your decisions. I realize the study began in 2022, and I have been out of the loop. I humbly request a delay in the council's decision on rezoning until April 2025. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, we have Dale Quick.
I'm sorry, who?
Dale Quick.
Gail Quick? Dale Quick. All right. Then now we clap. We're getting it. We're doing this thing, you guys. Can we get walk-up music for people? Like, that'd be cool, too, right?
Hi, my name is Dale Quick. I will attempt to inject a bit of humor in my comments, but make no mistakes, I have deep concerns on these points. Repeating, reading Appendix A, it shows that the scheduled process for developing the comprehensive plan was significantly short-circuited. I see the elimination of the May and July work sessions, along with the August review session. In addition, the review and buy-off session was rushed from October to July. I've rushed to meet a deadline and skipped steps building IKEA furniture, and the results were far from optimal. I presume the same principle applies when created a comprehensive plan. The rest of my remarks concern the residential medium language on page 225. Halloween was not long ago, but I was much more frightened reading this sentence. Future densities are anticipated up to a maximum of 80 dwelling units per acre. For those keeping score at home, an acre is a bit less than four 11,000 square foot lots. Now imagine 80 housing units in that same space in the middle of your neighborhood, and try not to scream. Most problematic is this sentence. Typical lot sizes with median middle housing types range from 2,000 to 5,000 square feet, and up to at least six units per lot are allowed unless higher densities or intensities apply. So many things to unpack here. Version history shows that the weasel word "typical" replaced the original straightforward "minimum" at the beginning of this sentence regarding lot sizes. Maybe this is for the best because dividing a 10,000 square foot lot by six leaves only 1,700 square feet. For comparison, the lots at the Hollywood Hill Manufactured Home neighborhood are over 4,500 square feet, which is about three times this size. In the version history number for the units per lot, we see something that reminds me of me being at the blackboard during grade school. Two, eight, no, four, wait, six. When I see numbers careening around like me driving Mario Kart, I detect a strong odor that instead of being based on real-world requirements or projections, they are instead pulled out of thin air. Finally, I feel most compelled to make a report, I almost felt compelled to make a report to Amnesty International after witnessing torture and abuse of logic and language after reading the phrase "up to at least." My mind swirled for days trying to comprehend what this meant until my wife pointed out that the common vernacular for this is "minimum." Therefore, this plan states that there will be a minimum of six units per lot over the vast swathes of Bothell. I strongly believe this is an outrageously absurd number that has no grasp of realistic needs for Bothell's growth. Please reject this plan or modify it to match Bothell's actual needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, next up, we have Mary Fontis.
Is Mary here? Mary?
Mary, she might be online. Let me check here. I'm not, I'm not seeing her online, so I'll call on Mr. Kelman.
Are you Mr. Kelman?
I am.
Fantastic.
Go ahead. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Thompson, for allowing me to address the council. Thank everybody for coming, and thank you, chief. Norman Kelman, a citizen for 40 years. I pay my taxes and I vote. I'm a citizen in good standing. If it wasn't for my neighbors that brought this to my attention, I wouldn't be here. And I thank them, Eli and Debbie, for letting us know. I'm against this because it's going to change the character of my street, the potential to change the character of my street and my neighborhood, like the adult home that started across the street caused a lot of disruption. I happen to do a background check on Jason Greenspan, and I think that, for all the good that Mr. Greenspan is doing, he's not our kind of guy. And for those reasons, I'm against this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Jeremy Toddros.
Now you can clap.
Oh, got a feeling a lot of y'all are going to regret that clap. All right. So thank you, council, for hearing me today. I'm speaking here in support of the plan. I'd like to start out a little bit with some data. The average median home value in Bothell is $974,000. However, the average selling price for 2024 is 1.1 million. So this is a problem when it comes to affordability that is not really improving, it's getting worse. Keep in mind that the average household income in Bothell is $116,000. This is getting, affordability in Bothell is becoming out of reach for most average people in Bothell. And I completely understand that there's a lot of concerns over character, like neighborhood character. And I know that there's been flyers flying around that there have been like 35-foot apartment buildings going up in certain neighborhoods. However, if you look at the plan, that's not really the case here. This opens up a lot of opportunities for duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes that allow for ownership opportunities for people who are not wealthy in Bothell, or who are not lucky enough to have been here before things got unaffordable. Something I'd also like to mention today is something that came up a few years ago when I was here for, kind of the whole community forum when it came to, when we were first looking at this plan. In my little group, I brought up a question of if there are no changes, where are people supposed to live? The literal response I got was, "It's not my problem." And I completely respect the honesty of that response because it's good to know. I appreciate that. However, that person was incorrect. Is their problem, is all of our problems if this is not addressed? Let's fast forward 20 years to 2044. What happens when the affordability issue has not been addressed? What happens when the middle falls out in which the average people in Bothell cannot afford to live here, and all that is left are the people who are already wealthy, or the people who, again, were fortunate enough to have been here before things got unaffordable? What happens to where the firefighters live? What happens to the servers, the shopkeepers, the teachers, educators, the tradespeople, and caregivers for the elderly? Where do they get to live? There's a term known as super commuters. This is a term that if you're not unfamiliar with, I would very much encourage you to look up because that could be the future here. What happens when our downtown businesses cannot sustain themselves? Because unlike a lot of other communities, we have a 60% live and work rate. So what happens when the people who live and work here cannot afford to live here anymore? This may all sound dramatic, but this is currently what's happening in California. This is what is currently about to happen in Montana, who are facing similar issues, are facing similar resistance. So I know that this is going to be very unpopular, but I am very much in support of this plan, and I do hope most people here reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Dale, and I don't have a last name for Dale, so if anybody's in the audience... There you go.
You guys can applaud now.
I don't know, but you're the only Dale I have on the list, so. State your name for the record.
My name is Dale Rector. Thank you for the opportunity to hear our feedback. Our family moved here in 1997. We live in the Conifer View East neighborhood, which is over by West Hill. Our property is currently proposed to be zoned M3, which is minimum 30 units, maximum 60 units. It is a, a single-family home, or single-family neighborhood, and has been since we lived there. The first thing I would like to point out is, on the zoning map, right behind our house is a steep critical slope down to a wetland. All of that steep critical slope, all of that large wetland is currently zoned as M3 on the, on the zoning map, which is highly inaccurate. You're not going to be able to do high-density development on top of a wetland. Also, the houses right to our, right towards closer to West Hill, there's also a wetland right there, which is why there are no houses there, and that is also being proposed to be zoned M3. And then I would also note that with those wetlands, the city of Bothell has come in and put in berms between the wetland and the parks that are there to keep the water out of the park. There's not much water in there. And so the two areas that are zoned M3, both of those areas are at the back of essentially single-family neighborhoods, sort of the very back. So people would, the proposal is essentially, hey, let's put this, let's go through this whole single-family neighborhood, and in the very back of it, let's put a giant apartment complex. And so I think that is a terrible place to put apartment complexes, and also it's right, right on top of wetlands and steep critical slopes. And so I think there would be a significant challenge of trying to put those there anyway. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, I have Chen Shi. Oh, there she is. She's, she's actually online. I'm going to bring her in. So it'll take a second. Chen, can you hear me?
She. She. Don't mute it.
Chen, your microphone's muted. Can you hear me? There you go. Thank you. You'll have three minutes.
Yes. Okay. So thank you very much for giving us the chance to speak to the council. And we wanted to basically draw attention to the same two areas that Gail brought up, which is in West Hill. That could be hugely impacted by the rezoning. And the designation of our M3, as we understand these two areas around Conifer View Park and Taltree Park. And, and this kind of designation, we believe, completely ignores the area's geographical setting and infrastructure capacity. Even the, like Gail says, there's no, like, even though on the map, the two areas seem right next to the Bothellway corridor, there's actually no vehicle or foot traffic access from Bothellway or anywhere within the corridor. And the, the, and all the, all the, all other our M3 zones in the comprehensive plan are either right next to main roads or have direct access by vehicle traffic from main roads. So this is definitely not what, what these two neighborhoods are, are like. And the two areas sit on top on, and on the edge of West Hill, facing steep terrain overlooking Bothellway. They, these also are, these two areas also integral and critical to Conifer View and Taltree communities. And these areas are foot traffic dominant in both parks, and the surrounding trails are heavily used by residents from all over the West Hill neighborhood, and kids walk to and from school through the parks. And so the cul-de-sacs are full of neighborhood activities on a clear day. And, and also, we'd like to, so we believe that preemptive op-zoning for the entire city, amending minimum density that triple or quadruple the current density, is an open invitation to developers, basically, to come into the neighborhood. And it completely changes the dynamics of how building proposals are reviewed and permitted. Currently, most of the orange areas on the map are zoned single-family housing. So to build high-density multi-family housing, one will need to apply for rezoning and code amendments, and pub hearings will need to be had, and setbacks and buffers will be under scrutiny because they're critical to the existing family quality of life. But if sweeping zoning changes are passed, and all of the orange areas become multifamily zoning, the review process will turn into a formality, and the proposals are guaranteed to be approved as long as they don't go over the max density. This would essentially eliminate any effect of public input on individual proposals. And sweeping op-zoning changes the, and these changes overlook each neighborhood's uniqueness and generalizes the need for density.
Thank you, Chen. Your time is up. Thank you, sir. Your time is up. Thank you. Next, we have Kat Antez-Todros.
There's a button. Oh, okay. All right. Hi, everyone. So I think that, kind of like Jeremy, I think everyone's going to be clapping in a minute.
Can you please state your name for the record, too?
Thank you. Kat Antez-Todros. I am a citizen of Bothell. I just wanted to, I'm not going to take a whole lot of time. I just wanted to kind of bring up an anecdote from a year and a half ago. There was, there was like a community forum, like, thing where we all got in a group. It was a couple of years ago. Anyway, during the discussion, it was me and just a group of people, and we were kind of talking about our perspectives about the zoning and how this is going to impact things. And one of the things that I was talking about is that I am an educator, my husband's an educator, both full-time, and we cannot afford a house here. Like, thinking about affording a house here is laughable because, like, you know, teachers don't get paid that much. And so we were kind of talking about how, you know, two people who are full-time, who mold the, the brains of young'uns, can't afford to live in the place that maybe they teach. And one of the things that was said to me was, "Well, you can't live wherever you want." And my thought at the time was, okay, that can be misconstrued in a lot of different ways. But my thought, as someone who is in their early 30s, who is not from here, my parents aren't from here, is that I either can, A, inherit a house here that my parents bought, you know, 30, 40 years ago, when it was possible to buy a house on their salary, or I should have been buying a house when I was a fetus because that's when it was affordable. So that's all my comment. I was going to say, I am approving of this. I think Bothell's going to change in a lot of different ways. It's just kind of how we adapt to that, and I think that this is a good plan to do so.
Thank you. Next, we have Kelsey Albertson. Kelsey Albert...
Kelsey.
Kelsey.
There. Got it. Thank you for having me speak. I was going to go a different direction, but I think now that I want to kind of go where I started. I bought a home here when I was 23 years old in downtown Bothell, and it was affordable. It was $230,000. It was not my dream home, but it was a starter home. So, fast forward, I bought another one, and then I bought another one. And it can be done. Affordability can be done. I am not for this comp plan. I do believe that we can actually move forward in a changing and evolving marketplace in Bothell. I do think that your guise for affordability is more or less for more tax revenue, which... So, fast forward, I bought another one, and then I bought another one. And it can be done. Affordability can be done. I am not for this comp plan. I do believe that we can actually move forward in a changing and evolving marketplace in Bothell. I do think that your guise for affordability is more or less for more tax revenue, which that's totally fine. I understand where we're all coming from. However, if you do it the way that you should do it, which is not completely inundate our infrastructure that we don't have enough of, our schools, and also our community and our neighborhoods, it can all be done. This seems as though it's been shoved down everyone's throats. It's very forced, and it's like a rail, like a train has left the station and there's no stopping it, and the room is full of people that feel the same way. So thank you for hearing me out. It's not the direction that I was gonna go, but that's where it's at right now. Thank you.
Next, thank you. Please hold your applause. Next up, we have Kristin Holfman. Holfman? Sorry. When you get to the podium, please state your name for the record, so if I don't pronounce it right.
Hi, my name is Kristin Heflin, and I am here on behalf of my neighbors in the Queensborough neighborhood. We are in opposition of the proposal to rezone, allowing 25 to 50 units to be built per acre in our residential neighborhood. Three reasons for this is because of safety, community, and affordability. First, safety. I live on Meridian Avenue South and walk a mile and a half to work each day. I pass dog walkers, joggers, and children walking to school daily. These residential roads do not have sidewalks, and people park their cars on the side of the street, causing us to walk into the road to get around the cars. This is fine. This is a residential neighborhood, and is to be expected. However, traffic is increasing with the already existing new builds in our neighborhood. Nothing has been done to address these, this increase. The developers earning profits have not needed to pay for infrastructure improvement projects. The only ones losing here are the residents. Next is community. Queensborough does not have an HOA. For better or for worse, it is a feast of visual diversity. Many people have remained living here, or have even moved here because of this diversity. We might not have the prettiest houses, but we have big trees and a place to live where existing on a middle-class income is nothing to be ashamed of. Continuing to tear down small homes and replacing them with giant, sterile new builds takes away from the down-to-earth charm of our neighborhood. Last, affordability. This rezone proposal does not improve the lives of the community. It only serves to allow the developers and their connections to make money. As we have all seen, the new condos and apartments that are supposed to increase housing density are fitted with luxury furnishings, driving up the rental prices. How is this rezone proposal going to change anything? What I would like to see is something similar to what Linwood has done. They have revamped many retail areas and built up above the storefronts. We could do something similar in the Canyon Park retail area, since it is close to public transportation. I also think there should be accountability for the new accommodations to be less lavish and more functional for those trying to find an affordable place to live. Lastly, make it easier for those in residential areas to build a simple ADU in their backyard or garage. This would allow for housing density to progress, but at a more manageable scale for our neighborhoods.
Next, please hold your applause. Thank you. Next, we have Trevor Albertson.
My name's Trevor Albertson. I'm a resident here in the, off of 200th, and I guess one question I want to ask, and I've done some research on the current council members, but it seems like you guys are throwing something down our throats, and none of you guys actually live in the areas that are affected by this. You guys all live outside of the area. There's only one of you that lives somewhere in this area, and for some reason, your area's not being changed. It's weird. I attended another meeting last year, or over the summertime, because I was going to apply for a position with the Civil Service Board, and I overheard and had a conversation with one of our council members, and they were talking about these things and how you get them passed. You make them as complicated and confusing as possible for the public, so that they will just give up and not show up and speak up against these things. And so, if you look at the map that you guys just released, and the 496 pages of documents that you released, it is the most confusing set of documents that I've ever seen, unprofessional. Like, I cannot understand how this can be even something that we're even talking about here, because that is not a plan that is ready to go. The map does not match up with any of the code changes in our area in particular. There is no definition of whatever the little area, you know, the R-whatever in the code definitions. It's very confusing, and I think, you know, the only way that these things get through in any type of government is some sort of corruption and some sort of, somebody's getting a payday, is all I gotta say.
Please hold your applause. Next, we have Wayne Barinter.
Good evening, Mayor Thompson, council, and Bothell neighbors. This is not about don't change. This is about changing properly. While I fully support smart growth and impactful, affordable housing initiatives, I strongly oppose the proposal to rezone established, single-family neighborhoods into areas that increase allowable density by sixfold. Random high-rises on a lot next to your own house. I'm all for affordability, and I have great sympathy for the people who have spoken up about how Bothell is not affordable. This is not the way to do it. In fact, it's unacceptable. My concerns are threefold. First, economics. We've heard a little bit about this so far. For many of us, our homes, our home equity is our most significant financial asset, and this plan undermines that security. We do not want to leave it up to one random resident and one random developer to make a decision that may dramatically reduce the appeal of an entire neighborhood. Why would we do that? We can do better, and if we need help doing better, I volunteer to help. Second, transparency. We've heard a bit about that, too. This process fails to reflect enough resident voices. While there was some outreach, the concerns of those of us living in the affected areas seem to have been sidelined. The details of this plan are not clear, and they are not clear enough to enough of us. I respect, as a communications and marketing person, that trying to communicate to 50,000 people is a difficult challenge, especially in this election year nationally. But this issue requires more and more input. Finally, thoughtfulness. Bothell's zoning generally is quite clean. There are a number of new apartments and new condos in our city. We have neighborhoods, we have business districts, and these multifamilies in their proper place. Finally, a random sixfold increase in density outlined in this plan is unacceptable. In the next election, if this council approves this plan, we will vote against those who prioritize this drastic overreach outlined in this plan. We can do better. Let's do the hard work with even more purpose to get this truly right for everyone, because this plan is not right.
Thank you. Next, thank you. Please hold your applause. Next up, we have Donna Bardslay.
Thank you, mayor, mayor, deputy, or deputy mayor and council members. My name is Donna Bardslay. I'm a resident of downtown Bothell, and I would like to express my support for the comp plan and especially the developmental regulations and city code amendments. I had some polite comments, but I'm a little fired up right now, so I'm going to try to tone it down, because I've been listening to my fellow community members demonize myself and my family, because I live in a multifamily housing unit in Bothell. I'm a renter on purpose. Well, actually, not really renting on purpose, but I chose where to live on purpose because it better suited our family's needs. We used to live in a single-family home. We did that for a while, and we wanted something different, and we wanted to also stay in Bothell. And I've been sitting here listening to the assumptions and the insinuations that maybe everyone else's needs of people who are bragging that they have not even been in the housing market for decades possibly, should come above everyone else's. And I find that pretty disheartening, that people in our community are doing that, when they are claiming to care about the character of the city. We are out here in your city. We want to live here. We want to contribute. We are not interested in destroying the character of your city or ruining Bothell. Having said that, I have read a lot of the comprehensive plan, including land use, housing, transportation, parks and rec, those sections. I applaud the council, the efforts of city planners and staff to provide for a broad variety of housing types at all income levels. I understand you're also mandated by the state, and I applaud your choice to tackle that problem on behalf of all Bothell residents, and I thank you, and I urge you to vote yes on this comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jim Peppam.
Thank you, council, for allowing me to speak. Apologize for my lack of preparation because of such short notice, and that's the first comment I'd like to make, is the actual lack of communication to the citizens of Bothell that are affected by this rezoning is atrocious. In many states, it would be in violation of most state laws when you go and not, in writing, at least 30 days prior to anything, provide people within 300 feet of a zoning area and those people within it to be notified. And I think that that is absolutely outrageous. If you take a look at, and I've been a resident here for over 30 years, past Bothell councils that had developer interest, passed through a number of things without citizen knowledge. And I'm hoping that this council will not do that. I live off 100, up on 197th, and I see the traffic right now going down 100th during commuting times. And I understand that we have to make density changes. That is a given. However, to make an RM1, which is 50 people per acre, from what I can gather so far, I'd like to know where the numbers are that really demand that kind of rezoning density. You know, what is the current projected vacancy rates? And that's taking into account current and projected construction. Has anyone talked to North Shore School District to see how Maywood is going to support the density of 50 residences per acre? They're building a modernization now, right now, that's just to get the current kids out of portables. And so, the, there is three schools in the vicinity up there, one public, one private. The privates don't provide transportation for the students. And so, the question is, right now, you have four and five-block backups on 100th. It takes me 15 minutes to get out of my cul-de-sac, because people can't get in and out. If you develop the five acres that are sitting behind me with 50 people, that 100th will be an absolute clogged area, and it's being operated as an arterial now, which doesn't meet state arterial standards.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up. Next, we have Jim Caniff.
My name is James Caniff. Good evening, mayor, deputy mayor, and council members. I live in a single-family home, 10201 Northeast 186th Street, right over her block. I'm in the downtown transition area, that's what you guys zoned it. I live together with my wife and my two boys, one's eight, one's about to turn 10, and I don't want to live next to a three-story building or a five-story building. Bothell transition area, which you guys zoned right now, is three floors and 35 feet. But as of this year, Amanda Davis, on February 13th of 2024, made some projects called, a project named DTAHO, which is Downtown Transition Affordable Housing Overlay. So people, there's gonna be affordable housing changes, but in my downtown transition area, which is right next to the downtown core, it's gonna go from 35 feet and three floors to additional two floors, so five floors with the 55 feet, without the five-foot setbacks for no windows and a 10-foot setback with windows. I don't want to live next to a building with five floors of people looking in my house with two boys. I want to vote against this, changes. I know the Governor Inslee signed a law adding affordable housing to all you guys. By law, you guys have to make changes for certain populations, and Bothell meets those certain populations. Right now, you can take a single-family lot and put a fourplex, a triplex, or duplex. You don't have to put a duplex on a corner like they used to do in Bothell. We're close to mass transit, but let our kids not grow up in the shade of five-story buildings. Let them grow up in a neighborhood where parks and a safe environment. Please help Bothell grow better, not an apartment town like downtown Kirkland or Redmond. Please let my kids grow up in the sun, not the shade of an apartment right over here, please. Thank you for your time. Appreciate you guys.
Thank you. Please hold your applause. Next up, we have Mark Rowe.
My name is Mark Rowe. Good evening, Mayor Thompson, council members, and fellow residents. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight about the proposed comprehensive plan and zoning updates. While growth is necessary, this plan takes an approach that disrupts Bothell's character, livability, and fairness to its longtime residents. Rezoning single-family neighborhoods into RM1 and RM2 brings a sixfold increase in allowable density. This drastic shift allows multifamily developments in areas designed for single-family homes. Overcrowding, traffic congestion, and strain on schools and infrastructure are inevitable. Residents who choose Bothell for its peaceful, family-oriented neighborhoods are now faced uncertainty about their quality of life. Beyond livability, this plan raises significant equity concerns. Many homeowners have built their lives around the ability or the stability of their neighborhoods. These dramatic zoning changes will diminish property values and undermine financial security for longtime residents who have invested everything into their homes. It's unacceptable to shift the financial and emotional cost of these changes onto them while developers profit. This plan also lacks balance. Instead of targeting established neighborhood Instead of targeting established neighborhoods, the city should focus on smart growth strategies, utilizing underdeveloped commercial areas, repurposing vacant properties, and emphasizing true transit-oriented development. Bothell can grow responsibly without sacrificing its identity. Environmental impacts must also be addressed. Increasing density in single-family neighborhoods will lead to the loss of tree cover in open spaces, contradicting Bothell's climate goals, and reducing livability. Residents expect the city to act as a leader in sustainability, not undermine it. Finally, the process has not reflected values or priorities of Bothell residents. Community engagement isn't just about gathering input, it's about meaningful action. This plan dismisses the concerns of people who call these neighborhoods home. Reject this plan and work with the community to create one that balances growth with fairness, housing with preservation, and development with our shared future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Tyler Dryden.
Okay. Hi, my name's Tyler Dryden. Bothell City Council Members, thanks for taking the time to let us comment today. I've called West Hill Neighborhood, or at least I learned it was called West Hill today, my home for the last six years. My wife and I love our neighborhood and have no desire to move anywhere else, to where we intend to raise our daughter, who's currently two, and hopefully retire to one day. The neighborhood's a truly unique area in Bothell. It's commonplace to see kids learning to ride bikes in the streets, families taking morning and afternoon walks, people getting their furry friends out for some exercise, or sidewalks full of children coming home from, to and from school. Before I lived in Bothell, it appeared that, from the outside, that the city manages growth superbly. The high-density housing locations always made sense to me within downtown, within accessible walking distance to public transportation, or within walking distance to major shopping centers. This is why we were really shocked to see the proposal for our neighborhood. To go from what is effectively a maximum of R5 to a minimum of R25 is extreme. It'll radically transform the neighborhood and the hustle and bustle of downtown. In a time when single-family residences are becoming more and more expensive, the teardown of these homes is going to reduce the quantity of those houses and only exacerbate the problem. I understand that some increases necessary to meet budgetary constraints, population influx, et cetera. Would you just ask that these increases are done in moderation? A 25-unit acre minimum is not moderate. It's not bold. It's not clever. It's not a solution. It's extreme and hurtful to a community that has long planned to be what it is. We plead to allow low-density housing to be part of the Bothell community, just as any other type of housing. We deserve to maintain the integrity of our neighborhood. We came to Bothell for a day, but our neighborhood convinced us to stay for a lifetime. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Dana Worman. Worman?
Hi, my name is Dana Worman. I'm speaking today in support of the draft comprehensive plan and more housing choices. When I lived in Bothell and worked in Canyon Park, the way that I was able to afford a place reasonably close to my job was by renting a spare bedroom from a couple in a single-family home neighborhood in a different part of town. While this living situation was fine, living in a bedroom in someone else's home and having to drive to get anywhere I wanted to go left something to be desired. It was easy enough for me, having flexibility as a single person with no kids, but I can only imagine the pressure of trying to find affordable housing in a decent location with a family to support. What we know is true is that there is a housing affordability crisis that has affected people's quality of life and hijacked our politics at every level. What we also know is true is that the only way out is to build more housing, and the only way to build more housing without unnecessarily worsening traffic through even further sprawl and hastening climate change is to build more housing and housing varieties near where people already work and play, like Bothell. I've been encouraged by the housing construction I've seen in Bothell, especially near the business centers where people have always commuted often long distances, but this is not enough if we are to have any chance of meeting the housing demands that we will see over the next 20 years. I'd also like to remind the council that polls have consistently shown that a broad, quiet majority of people support more housing choices, and please keep that quiet majority in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have David Heller.
I'm David Heller. All these folks have been here for decades. I've been here less than a year. I bought a house and was going to remodel it, but it had so much rot in the walls, we had to tear it down and start over. That has relevance I'll get to in a moment. The most successful football franchise, unfortunately, in the last decade was the New England Patriots, and their motto was "Do Your Job." So what's your job? It's not to raise more money, it's not to grow the city. Your job is to make life better for the people who are here. That's your job. How's that going? Well, 228th is a parking lot. Both Levert Highway is a parking lot. Meridian, where I live, is the opposite, is the Indianapolis Speedway. And there's not only no sidewalks, there's no shoulders. And children walk to school this time of year in the dark on that street. Is this plan going to make that better or worse? It's obviously going to make it worse. We've heard that there's a comprehensive plan and that you're going to upgrade infrastructure. We also heard there was $200 million in grants for that, which is going to pay half of it. So where's the other $200 million going to come from? It's going to come from us. If you divide $200 million by the number of people in Bothell, that's a pretty scary number. And how do I know that the developers aren't going to pay for it, but we, the people who live here, are going to pay for it? When I built this house, y'all made me put a sidewalk in front of it, at my expense. It is the sidewalk to nowhere. There are no sidewalks for blocks and blocks except in front of my house. And down at the bottom of the hill, there's a development where about a dozen houses went in, and y'all didn't make them put in a sidewalk. So apparently, developers do not have to pay for the infrastructure upgrades that they necessitate and from which they profit, but the homeowners do. This is inappropriate, it's unnecessary. What we have heard from some pretty knowledgeable people is that you already have enough density in Bothell to meet the state requirements. So if you're going to do this, it's at best premature, because you need to develop a plan to make the people who are going to profit from this, which is the developers, you need to make them pay for the infrastructure. They should be paying to upgrade the things from which they're going to profit. And if you're not able or willing to do that, then you shouldn't do this at all.
Thank you. Please hold your applause. Next, we have Patty Belasey.
Just yell if you can't hear me. My name is Patty Belasey. I live at 2614-242nd Street Southeast. I have lived in Bothell for the past 36 years. I love my neighborhood and my town. I have learned to accept growth with all the apartments that have sprung up downtown, but to allow the possibility of putting apartments in our wonderful neighborhoods is ridiculous. When I discussed this with someone who is quite knowledgeable on this subject, he said it would never happen, too expensive. But I thought, why do we need to put it in the comprehensive plan if it would never happen? It just opens the door to the possibility. By the way, I just recently saw a proposed map, which I saw distributed, showing just that possibility, and it hasn't even passed yet. Some of you may not be aware of what we went through with the citywide street plan about 25 years ago. There was a brief article in our local paper about a couple of streets being looked at. Luckily, my neighbor got curious and went to City Hall to find out what was going on. Oops, it wasn't a couple of streets, it was a whole citywide street plan. I live on a very short and narrow street near downtown Bothell, and the city planned to run a major street from the business park through my neighborhood. One person noticed that they planned to have a street run right through their house. Well, that did not sit well with the citizens of Bothell. We had over 200 people come to a city council meeting, which had to be held at the high school, and more than 1,000 people signed a petition. We stopped that boondoggle, and several council members lost their positions the following Previous city manager tried to locate the new city hall at Bothell Landing. We called it the Taj Mahal. We stopped that also, because it is our town, and it is very special. You represent us. I have been told we are already ahead of schedule for the Growth Management Act. There are many apartments and houses being built right now, especially on 527 between downtown and 228. I do not believe we need an increase of 150% density in our neighborhood. 36 years ago, the rule was four houses per acre. Now, 36 later, it's 10. Now you want to increase it another 150% in our neighborhoods. I think probably most of the people here tonight are against this proposed comp plan. I think this and last week's comments show you what your constituents do not want. Hopefully, you will back off this plan, and when the time comes that increased density is needed, I sincerely hope you involve the community more than you have at this point.
Thank you. Next, we have Justin Buchard, and he is online. Justin, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Go ahead, you'll have three minutes.
All right. Some of you may remember me from the middle housing initiatives. My lot was used as an example of what was wrong with the code at the time. And what happened there is middle housing initiatives allowed us to get more of a menu of options. So before, you could only build single-family homes. Now you can build single families, or duplex, or a triplex, but you're not required to build anything. One thing that is changing here, and I just learned about it today myself, is in RM2 and higher, there's required minimum densities. So for example, in my case, where my backyard could be infilled to either match or extend an existing subdivision, the minimum build would be a triplex or higher. This means it's kind of like the opposite of a menu, where in the past, it was exclusive single-family zoning. Now it's sort of exclusionary, but in the other way. It's kind of like a reverse exclusive single-family zoning. So the menu is gone. That was sort of my first point, at least for RM2 and above. RM1's kind of interesting. It looks like you can subdivide into lots of any size, and you could put any single-family homes as you can fit in the setbacks. So that's maybe a little bit better, and that leaves that menu open. So I kind of like RM1 a little bit better than RM2. My lot happens to be right above an RL1 line, so from the most permissive to one of the densest, it's right on that line. So it's kind of interesting. This will make infill a lot harder in zones that are RM2 or above. Because of the minimum density, it reduces the pool of potential buyers or people who might want to build. So that means that I think there'll be sort of less infill development, short of, again, destroying existing homes. I converted my home from a single-family residence into a duplex through the ADU process. And for someone who said to me, "Don't pay for development," I paid four or five K in development fees for that one. So we definitely paid something. Anyway, now, in order to do any sort of big development, I'd have to destroy a perfectly functional duplex, which is a little weird. Another thing, I went through the code. We would need crystal-clear clarification on subdivisions for non-conforming use. We're effectively turning half the city or more into legal nonconforming, which is a precarious position to be in. It's unclear whether you can subdivide and keep the nonconforming use and then do new development on the new lot. I think that needs to be, like, really, really clear. Another thing I noticed, parking mandates, combined with the density mandates, make it really hard to come up with something. And what I would challenge anyone on council to do is do some back-of-the-pack. Pick a lot. I volunteer my lot, because it's on a corner lot, it's fairly big, it's a double lot, under the old rules of West Hill, and try to come up with something that you could actually sell, right, that you could actually build. Because one thing, for example, it says that the doors must face the street. Well, that adds a lot of complexity, because a lot of the times, the lots are deeper and frontages at a, you know, is at a premium. So I, again, encourage them to try to just pick some random lots. I volunteer my own, and try to, again, make something workable. And then, it's not super clear either whether you can add an ADU to an existing legal nonconforming single-family home. That, I think, needs to be-
Thank you, Justin. Your time is up. Thank you. Next, I have Ken Newton.
Feel like I had to do that for the clap. I don't see a green light. There it goes. My name is Ken Newton. Thank you for letting me speak. Last week, much like a lot of us, we didn't know about the meeting until the night before. I would like to congratulate the city of Bothell for being able to meet the housing mandate, Growth Management, actually exceeding it quite a bit, from what I understand. But by doing that, the infrastructure, the taxes, all of that is being raised. The teachers taught us to show our work. We should be able to see where every penny comes from. Bothell, to me, is local helping local. As you see, I have a disability that some days keeps me on a cane, some days I can walk around without it. Because of the growth in my neighborhood, I can no longer walk my dogs. I sometimes will collapse, and with the new vehicles that like to speed through our neighborhood, I can't do that. Potholes, there's plenty of other infrastructure that the money could be going towards. One thing I just want to say, country village. Local, or Bothell is desirable because Bothell is unique. Having this plan takes that uniqueness away. Why should we fix the houses we live in to make Bothell look as good as it is if we're going to be pushed out? About a year and a half ago, I no longer was able to see the deer that ate out of the apple of hilt next to our house, because it got torn down. A new rule had to be implemented because of the turnout tonight. Look at this. I mean, your constituents have obviously turned out when they found out what was really on the line, when they were told that something needed to be done, and they have come together tonight. And what I see here is local helping local. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Mayor Thompson, that's the last I have on the sign-up list, but I'm going to call on audience members who wish to speak to queue up, maybe three at a time. When you get to the podium, please state your name for the record. And for those of you in the virtual audience, I will call on you after we get through those that are here in person tonight. So please queue up if you wish to speak, and please state your name. You will each have three minutes.
When does my three minutes start? Okay, thank you. My name is Annie Elliott. I am a resident of Maywood Hills. I'm here to tell you that I am the product. I am the product of low-income and Section 8 housing, and I really dislike what I'm seeing here. I dislike it because I am also proudly the product of a planned community called Reston, Virginia, where we had tons of high-density housing. And that high-density housing came along with a lot of planning, and I see a dearth of planning in this town, a dearth. The roads are atrocious. I live on 104th. I pity the kids who have to go to school and walk down 104th on a road that's already awful with awful traffic. And Canyon Park Middle School is a travesty. The joke of the traffic lights and the cameras there is just not to be believed. People stop, they cross the double-yellow lines, they point the wrong way just to be able to park and go to these schools and pick their kids up, where there was clearly no planning for traffic at all. And so now, we're looking at a sixfold increase in traffic. You put that sixfold increase in traffic on 104th, and these kids will not be able to walk to school. There is no easement to widen these roads at all. And so now, what I'm hearing is that developers have basically bought this vote, and they have allowed themselves to come in and do whatever they want without oversight and without any planning and without any mitigation of problems with traffic or other infrastructure. Why? I ask you why? And I think the answer is- And I think the answer is money. The answer is always follow the money. I don't see any benefit to Bothell residents here. I see benefit to developers and possibly to the developers that, you know, paid for people's campaigns. And that's what I'm going to be looking for at our next election, is how we got to this point and how our residents are going to be able to send their kids to school walking down these roads with a six-fold increase in traffic, with no planning, no infrastructure changes, and no thought to any kind of public access and parking and everything else that goes along with it. And I can see the rest of my time.
Thank you. Please step up and state your name for the record.
Yeah, my name's Dave Spalding. My name's Dave Spalding. I live up in Queensborough, and I've lived there since 1977. And we used to drive down the road, and there was only a blinking light down at Canyon Park. And you drove through it. I mean, you went this way and that way, and you drove on through it. There was a KOA where QFC was at, and it was a pretty rural place. And I always remembered that the city always wanted to keep this small-town look, okay? And they used to say that because I've come to several meetings down here, and I've listened to people talk one way and another. I'm not getting any younger. I was a Seattle firefighter for 26 years, and I was, most of my time was down in the U District. And if you wanted to see growth go crazy, you watched it down there, because even in bad times, there was always a crane up, and there was always development going on. And it's like a big monster, and the thing just keeps eating out and out and out. And you can see that right from the University of Washington down here, and you can see the development coming out. It's been allowed, that's fine. My home was a subject of a problem, and they were going to put in a development in the back that the old man Stevens had a property back there. And if I hadn't gone down and actually looked at the plans that they were doing, because they said that they were going to put up a fence along the road. Well, there's already a fence there, and I was kind of questioning that. Well, as they started developing all this property, they ended up putting a 12-foot wall in the back of my yard. And they filled all the rest of that in. There's houses up there, and they looked right straight down into my property. That was Mayor Ray Oum helped us out in that thing. I guess to my point is, is that there's two different kinds of towns. There's ones that you like to go to, say, like Edmunds. No high rises, no nothing. It looks good. I know they're not in the same position. And there's also the places where it's really heavily developed, and you want to get away from them. And we are becoming one of those places. So that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity for the community members to address their concerns and offer input on proposed rezoning. My name is John Combs. I'm a homeowner in the Tall Tree Park neighborhood off of 88th Avenue Northeast on West Hill. I really wanted to avoid being a NIMBY commenter on this. However, it's not my backyard. It literally is my yard. My property is one of the, one of three on the eastern edge of the Tall Tree Park neighborhood that is designated on the map for rezoning to a R-M3. I was a bit surprised to have only found out about this proposed rezoning thanks to other concerned neighbors. I did get notice about the Red Barn Sub area along Bothell-Everett Highway and rezoning thanks to owning an adjacent property, but when it came to actually rezoning my property, no notice. I did participate in the community feedback on the Red Barn Sub area earlier this year, and I may have missed a mailer, but I'd really appreciate someone explaining why or how information on this wasn't sent directly to property owners in the rezoning area. As a parent of two 20-something adults who still live at home, I hope they will be first-time homebuyers soon. I appreciate the overwhelming need for more housing options and the benefit of increasing home density to fill those needs. However, the proposed rezoning does a disservice to our Bothell community and goes too far. It lacks much-needed nuance and flexibility to address unique locations and properties. As an example, the future potential to build a 30-unit building on the combined properties of me and my two neighbors is absurd, given the steep slope, native growth protection easements in place, and lack of reasonable access. It is also not in keeping with what first attracted our family to Bothell 28 years ago when we bought our first house and kept us here when we bought our current house. Bothell is a great mix of suburban homes, condos, apartments, green spaces, and especially wildlife. In our time in the Tall Tree Park neighborhood, we've had deer, coyotes, bobcat, quail, owls, eagles, hawks, woodpeckers, thousands of other birds, along with bats, raccoons, and additional critters and critical pollinators that call the green spaces of Bothell Home. The potential rezoning along the discussed rezoning of the Red Barn Sub area along Bothell-Everett Highway destroys all of this and will ultimately devalue the Bothell community, making our community just another uninspired, unimaginative city in the shadow of Seattle and Bellevue. We and you have an opportunity to ensure this doesn't happen. I implore you to listen carefully to community feedback and act accordingly. Rather than destroy, you have an opportunity to protect and grow in reasonable ways what makes our Bothell community special. Or we can be just another overcrowded, congested commuter-throughway to someplace else. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mike Johnson. I've been a resident of Bothell for 33 years, and I'm from the Maywood Hills neighborhood. I also was a council member 20 years ago, looking at the comprehensive plan, developing the transitional zoning that you see from the downtown and the activity areas in Canyon Park. One of the goals we had was to protect those neighborhoods, but also look at housing and how that transition occurs. I sent a letter in for the last meeting. Hopefully, you've read that. But I want to go somewhere else, and I also want to emphasize that the community here really wants a discussion. They want to engage with the decision-makers to make sure that this represents the community's vision and what we want to do. And I don't think that people are trying to take away the opportunities for those that don't have the means to get a home, okay? I will say, and supporting that is, I did, you know, it's hard to do the reading these days, but I did a little more reading on the housing targets for the City of Bothell based on the draft comprehensive plan changes. We're, the King County side of Bothell needs 5,800 new units, according to the plan. Its current supply capacity is 9,570, which leaves a reserve of 3,770 units available. Snoomish County, on the other hand, has a capacity target, I'm sorry, has a, I'm sorry, sno, sorry, got my numbers a little wrong. Snoomish County has 6,982, and they have a reserve capacity of 3,770. When you do the numbers and subtractions, we actually meet the targets by 199 units. That alone gives us the ability to engage our community. We meet the state mandates. So I'm getting the blinking light, so I'll do this real quick. As a council in our jurisdiction, we felt strongly enough that we had the ability to basically tell how our jurisdiction grows. And we chose the activity areas, you know, downtown Canyon Park for that growth and development and protecting those neighborhoods. I encourage you to work with the neighbors, the established neighborhoods, and find a way that works for all of us. Thank you very much.
Well, good evening, City Council of Bothell and to all the residents of Bothell. My name is Micah Campbell, and most likely, I'm probably the youngest person speaking here. I am a homeschooled high school student, and I live 1.5 miles north of here in between Maywood Hills Elementary School and the Canyon Park Junior High School. Now, over 30 years ago, my parents moved to the City of Bothell. They worked very hard to move into the quiet, peaceful neighborhood which they now live in. At that time, residents and council members were asking themselves how Bothell could keep its small-town feel. That was just mentioned not too long ago. That is no longer the case. Bothell is certainly not a small town. It is growing. It certainly is a growing city and feels, well, a lot larger than it did when my parents moved in years ago. However, there is a major reason for why Bothell residents appreciate this city. They can boast of quiet, peaceful, and family-friendly neighborhoods. Fellow residents of the City of Bothell and city council members, I hereby do state that the agenda to change the zoning in the City of Bothell will completely take away the reason for why my parents and many other people have moved here. Rezoning of our neighborhoods from single-family housing to high-density multifamily housing will discourteously take away the peace and quiet of these neighborhoods. Doing so disregards the people who have worked hard to be able to move into these beautiful neighborhoods. Those who live in these neighborhoods will have their privacy stripped from them and will be rudely forced to deal with tumultuous traffic. The increase in traffic will take away the safety of children at play and will add stress to others living in the neighborhoods. In addition to those things, rezoned areas will require a great increase in all utilities, thus creating an unprecedented need for the reconstruction of utility lines, pipes, electrical transformers, and more. The result of all of these things would be devastating to Bothell and its residents. Although there is a place for apartments, condominiums, and the like, our residential neighborhoods are not the place for them. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Felix Tasker, and I've been a Bothell resident since 2008. And it's going to be really hard to follow that speech, because I am extremely unprepared, and you will probably see some emotions up here. First and foremost, I want to echo what a lot of your constituents had said here, that we, there was extreme lack of communication. I live just right next to a park, right? My, I have two kids that go to the public school systems. One is in Canyon Park, one is in Maywood. And the infrastructure in this area has obviously not met up with the pace of growth as it is. My oldest child has two assemblies. There's 900-plus kids in Canyon Park Middle School. I do not understand how this plan addresses any of the current issues that we have in Bothell, right? I understand affordability, and I understand change needs to happen, but we need to address the issues at hand of the constituents that live here now, not the ones that might live here in the future. I don't understand how there is a plan, but there is no infrastructure plan, and how that plan might come to be if we get some funding. We need to have an infrastructure plan. It needs to involve roads. It needs to involve sidewalks. It needs to involve schools. It needs to involve parks. That is not being covered here. All we're doing is soliciting, as others have said, investors to come in. And by the way, I have already started to receive texts from those investors, asking, "When can I sell my property, my five-year-old home that is brand-new?" So they can tear it down and build three lots. Where is this going? How is this going to happen for the constituents that live here? This is unacceptable, and I completely oppose this plan. Thank you.
My name is Tammy On, and I've lived in the Queensborough neighborhood for the past 33 years. I think everyone that's come before me has said pretty much everything I wanted to say, probably more eloquently. I want to reiterate that I am against the proposed upzoning as shown in the comp plan, and I am, I was absolutely shocked to see the map showing all the small parcels with a line drawn through them and an upzone written in next to it, including my property. It just appears to be a wide swath of, the entire city has been upzoned minus just a couple of spots in downtown Bothell. And if you could just walk through our neighborhoods, especially the Queensborough neighborhood, just walk, take a walk through the streets, go up and down the blocks, go through some other neighborhoods, and look at the peculiarities and see where it doesn't make sense to put in higher-density homes. You'll find them here, 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 in so many different places. And that plus the fact that we don't, like the previous gentleman said, we just don't have the infrastructure or the services available to handle the demand that we have now. We've got, we need more police, we need more teachers, we need more healthcare providers, we need more everything, and we don't have it. And yeah, developers pay mitigation, but they can't pay enough to buy out all the properties on the corners of 228th and the Bothell-Everett Highway so we can add more lanes and improve the intersection. So for this and many other reasons, I urge you to not approve the comp plan and not upzone any of the neighborhoods, especially the residential neighborhoods. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Eric Backus. I've lived in Queensborough for over 30 years. I'm not anti-development, but I believe this comp plan goes too far in turning what is existing single-family residential neighborhoods into apartment complexes. I think it would change the character too much. I think it penalizes the people who live there in favor of people who eventually may live there. And one of the, one of the additional things that I worry about, people have mentioned before, is infrastructure limitations. Right now, developments are going on all over the place, putting in single-family homes. And even that is overstretching what infrastructure we have. There's no sidewalks on any of the streets around where I live. You know, we could use more streetlights. The traffic is terrible, and I don't see how even developers paying mitigation fees can fix the traffic problems we have on 228th and Bothell-Everett Highway and all the other streets connecting to it. So in summary, I oppose this plan. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Linda Newton. I also live in Queensborough. Mason, I met you when you first ran for city council, and you came to my door, and you asked for my vote. I told you I was very concerned with what I saw on the city council, that I felt I was seeing more interest being, more interest in energy being spent preparing for people that might someday want to come to Bothell, without any regard to the people that had developed the wonderful community that is Bothell. You assured me that, given the opportunity, y'all were going to turn that around. I'm waiting, and I'm watching, and I still am of an opinion that I will never vote for a tax or a levy to support any of the structure that you've left us with a financial blackmail to pay the cost that you're allowing developers to skate on. I still feel that you're more concerned with bringing new people in than you are taking care of the people that have developed this beautiful, beautiful city. Thank you for your time.
Hello, I'm Brian Anquist, Bothell resident, having a little deja vu from the Carlson Project, where you tried to stick out an apartment building in my backyard, and now you're trying to do it to all of Bothell. What problem are we trying to solve? It's a question that should be asked every time solutions are proposed. It helps ground you in the root of the problem to ensure the solutions either solve the problem and don't create others. Housing affordability is a problem shared by all of the Puget Sound areas, as well as other regions in the country. Unfortunately, the comprehensive plan proposal won't solve this problem, but create an ever-more complicated game of whack-a-mole. I sent a letter guessing- I sent a letter yesterday highlighting how the forces of Economics 101, didn't know you get a little lesson in school here, supply and demand will likely cause the opposite of the intended goals of housing affordability. Investor-backed corporations and developers with deep pockets and no purchasing contingencies will outbid and win out over single-family buyers, driving the cost of Bothell's single-family properties higher with reduced supply and increased demand, and thus become ever-more unaffordable. To those not backed by investment funds, of course. High-density apartments will replace the single-family fabric of Bothell and become a city of temporary residents renting until they can afford to move to the single-family residences they desire somewhere else. You will achieve your goals, but only in increasing the quantity of units. Affordability will continue to go down as the dollar per square foot goes up through rentals owned by investors and corporations, making it ever-more difficult for someone to actually own their own place and establish equity. The people that care about their city and their neighborhoods will dwindle. The community will decline. They won't be long-term residents staying for a lifetime. Bothell will be filled with people staying for a day, just to stop on their path to what they really are looking for, what Bothell used to provide. Regroup, reground, think about what you're trying to solve and how you should solve it. And by the way, everybody, it's a free market. You can sell your house for whatever price you want to, so when a developer knocks on your door, you set the price, not them. Remember that.
Hi, my name is Lori Dunham and we live in the Maywood Hills area. And we've been here for over 20 years. Everyone has already said most of the things that I wanted to bring up. I did notice when I was looking at the comprehensive plan that under transportation, there was a foreshadowing of the transportation problems. And there were several instances where it said, "We will do a feasibility study to see if we can make the parking better. We will do a feasibility study to see if we can have charging station parking available in these new neighborhoods. And then we'll implement things if it's possible." And I just thought, you know, it's the classic putting the cart before the horse. You know, figure out the infrastructure, make sure that's all there first, or simultaneously with a slower change. You know, I, I went, I, I didn't actually go on the tours, but I kind of did my own tour of middle housing. And I'm all for some duplexes and things like that, but not a huge sweeping change. And I know it would only help like really small families, but Bothell has tons of split levels, which are almost like two houses stacked on top. And it would be wonderful if the city would make available some guidelines for making a little mother-in-law in your split level. And then don't raise the taxes on the people because you're giving up privacy and then you're providing housing for someone. So try not to raise the taxes on the people that have these little ADUs in their basements. Anyway, that's it.
Ready? Hi, my name is Ernie Bellacy. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm going to go a little off my script that I already wrote down because previous speaker Mike Johnson said he had served on the city council 20 years ago. Well, I served on the planning commission 20 years ago. And we had a vision back then of what downtown was going to look like. And that vision was comprised of planning commissioners, the Bothell City Council, business owners, and stakeholders, citizens of the city. We got together as a group and formulated what is going on now in downtown Bothell. We knew of the growth that was going to come. We limited the heights of the buildings and put the higher ones in the center and moved out to the lower vision, or lower buildings. Today, we don't have that. We had no feedback from the people until tonight. See what happens when you involve the people that live here? You come up with a vision and then it's built. But tonight, we don't have that vision. I went and walked three neighborhoods on Sunday and I talked to a lot of people. And every person I talked to did not know about this comp plan. They had not received anything in the mail. We've heard from speakers tonight, they had not received any information. Yet you touted, "Oh, boy, we went out there and did a lot of work and involved a lot of people. How come nobody heard about it? How come some people..." Some people didn't know about this meeting until I knocked on their door. Two people are adjacent to a piece of property that's about five acres. And I talked to them about that. I said, "This, this planned comp, comp plan amendment will affect you." Well, how is that going to happen? Because right behind you could be a multi-story building. They were completely unaware that that could be the case. So again, I ask you to put this on the back burner and I guess that's it? It clicked off, I don't know. Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Bill McAllister. I'm a Bothell resident for about 23 years. I appreciate the opportunity to be up here with fellow residents and then get a chance to talk to the council. First time really being to a council member meeting. Did volunteer for the city for a long time. I'm pretty sure that all of you are elected and you're entrusted with what's best for the community and what's best for the people, young and old. We obviously want to grow and we, but we want to do it in a way that is kind of collaborative and working together. And I think that's where, you know, some of the words that came to my mind tonight are, "Where's the accountability?" You had a, a young lady here that talked about how one of you asked for her vote. So where is that? Where, where, where are those promises at? Where is what you took the oath for or you took a commitment to a year ago, two years ago, whatever that is? Where is that at for you guys? Where's the transparency? I'm part of a lot of, a lot of the people here that I found out about this last night from my neighbors. Thank God that, you know, we have a really good community and people share information. So where's the transparency in this city? We've had, as has been pointed out, we've had a few opportunities where we've been burned by council members. And we almost lost one of our parks. We actually lost a golf course because of it. So why can't we work together? Why do we have to come together late and have so many people, you know, be confused and not really understanding what's going on? Why do we have to have, you know, 495 pages to try to explain what's going on here? So I just ask that you listen to all these people. And as far as like, one of the buzzwords nowadays is democracy. Let the people speak. You guys work for us, but we want you to work with us. So please take the time, listen to these voices, maybe open this up to more people that couldn't be here tonight because they had a job to do or they have kids and they couldn't find a babysitter. Have another night to talk to us. Have another night to listen. They say that it's better if, and I'm not always good at this, but they say it's better if you close your mouth and open your ears. So thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Gregor Knights. I live on Meridian in the Queensborough neighborhood. I oppose the planned changes to the land plans for mostly two reasons, but a lot of reasons that have been mentioned. Reason number one, very self-centered. I'm a fairly new member of the community, only four years in Bothell, but for a specific reason, because I love it. I love Bothell, I love the identity, I love my neighborhood. I love being in Bothell. I'm really concerned because my specific neighborhood will be rezoned from single-family to RM2, to lose that identity and that neighborhood character. While completely understanding the need for higher density, for affordable housing, I do not understand the economics either that have been brought up before, how tearing down single-family homes makes single-family homes more affordable. Number two, that is more of a technical infrastructure reason. It has been mentioned, yes, infrastructure is a problem and I absolutely believe that things have to done in the right order. So infrastructure has to be planned, approved, and built before we can develop. Because as many others, when I'm parking on 228th, when I'm parking on 405th, when I'm parking on the Bothell Everett freeway, I do not believe that higher density is going to help the neighborhood. When I walk my dog on Meridian and I play Frogger with the different cars on there and I would really like to applaud the gentleman for the 25 feet of safety with the sidewalk to nowhere. I love walking my dog in that short piece where we are safe. That works really well. But yes, I think we first need the infrastructure, then we need to think about developing the right way. Why did I want to bring up those two points? I said, "I live here for only four years." Before, I lived for 15 years in Kirkland. I loved Kirkland when I moved there. I liked Kirkland for a long time. I started hating my home in Kirkland. I fled Kirkland at the end. Because it was overdeveloped, the density improved, everything became chaotic, things became unaffordable. So I urge you, please, listen to all the fellow people from Bothell. Please do not turn my Bothell into Kirkland North.
Good evening. My name is Gary Smith. I've been a Bothell resident for the last 33 years. Wow. A lot of changes in the last 33 years, especially probably in the, more so in the last 10 years. I cannot really add anything to what people have talked about tonight. Seems to me there are a lot of good reasons to reconsider this plan and maybe there are more, more reasons to oppose it than to approve it, perhaps. I really only have two questions I'd like to ask you. When you purchased your home in Bothell, and I assume most of you have, did you ever think or dream of a five-story building being built next door to your single-family residence? Well, if so, your dream may about to become true. Secondly, how many of your Bothell constituents who voted for you do you think would approve of the construction of apartment buildings in their single-family residential neighborhoods? I'm hoping that you will seriously consider the devastating results that might result if this rezone, if this plan is approved and rezones are, are, are approved as planned. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lisa Vorwark. I just want to actually extend an invitation. Many people have said, maybe you haven't maybe experienced what it's like to have a five-story apartment building next to your home. So I invite you to mine. I live one block from here and we can have coffee in my kitchen and watch people work out in the addition building. And you can see what that feels like. And I hope that you will take the message that people who've been here for a lifetime have put down roots and we just really feel ownership over the wonderful place that this is, that we have all worked to make it what it is. And while we want to welcome others and our stance is not at all against newcomers, we feel we have ownership in this community. We, we have put our lifetime, we've put our effort into making it what it is. And so we just want the quality of life for those of us who have put that time in to be maintained, I would say. So you're welcome to come on over. Thank you.
Little button on the bottom of the unit? Yep. Can you believe they gave me a high school diploma?
We've run through the battery.
Thank you. My name is Sam. I've only lived here for a couple of years. I moved here a couple of years ago.
Sam, I'm sorry to interrupt. We'll start your time over. What's your last name?
Sam Colby.
Thank you.
I've only lived here a couple of years. And I heard about this today. I'm a mailman here in Bothell. I saw some flyers put out on some of the mailboxes that I deliver to. I haven't had, I didn't have the time to read this comprehensive plan, look over it a lot, I will admit. I, you know, I had work today and then I had to go shopping and all that stuff. And I, I rent and my rent is very expensive. And I am in favor of more housing to increase supply and lower my rent. I'm seeing a lot of people here object to some of the more finer details of this plan, which again, I will say, I haven't read myself. I don't know them, I can't speak to them myself. But I'm seeing a sentiment of reject, I'm seeing a sentiment of people not wanting this plan. And my fear is that this, the, the details of this plan will bog down the overall goal of building more housing here. So I would like to urge the council to not simply just reject this plan and abandon the idea of more housing, but to instead focus on the finer details and smooth those out so that we can create more housing, more density, add more people to our community, and not upset all of these residents. I don't want the, I'm forgetting the term right now. But I, I fear that the opposition to this plan will instead be opposition to greater housing as a whole and instead be seen as opposition to specifics. And I want more housing. I love Bothell. I want more people to be able to experience living in Bothell. And, you know, I just want to use this time to just say, "Don't, don't let the details destroy the idea of greater housing." I want more of it, but I want the details to be more smoothed out and all of this stuff. And, you know, I, I don't want to see this die because it wa, enough effort wasn't put into it. I hope, thank you.
Hi, I'm Debbie McAfee. I live in Maywood Hills. Actually, I live across from Canyon Park Middle School and I can attest to the horrendous traffic. I appreciate that the cameras have been put up, but that's not solving it. I walk every day through downtown Bothell, down on Beardsley. I've watched the apartments at U-Dub, five stories, go up. We are not taking care of the infrastructure of the traffic. We are not taking care of the roads. And we need to address those items before we look at growing Bothell even more. Some of the streets you think, "Well, maybe they'll put a roundabout in." There's no room for a roundabout. Sometimes when I'm walking, I look, when I get to Beardsley and Main Street, I look up the hill towards 104th and there's five blocks of cars waiting to go through. Those that are not waiting have cut through other streets. It is atrocious and it is not safe. I'm actually surprised I've never been hit by a car, close, but I always try to make that eye contact. It's just not the time to be expanding in the way that you are proposing. I think there are options and we need to look at options, but not do a blanket sweep. I used to work at People's Bank on Main Street in the late 1970s, so I've been around Bothell a long time. What is with that building? There is nothing there, there's been nothing there, maybe once or twice. Main Street, I'm sorry if I'm going to offend anybody, it's a laughing matter. You're talking about changing the neighborhoods where we have single houses and Main Street has not been touched in over 50 years. And back then, it was the Good Old Boys Network. The Good Old Boys owned those properties and they did not want change. And now I think it's a combination of the Good Old And now I think it's a combination of the good old boys and the good new developers. We need to look at what exists and how we can change that in commercial spaces, not ripping through houses.
My name is Lucy Antonio, and I've lived in Bothell for 25 years, just two blocks from here. I just have, it's not just one person, it's just not one development. We have people from all over here. We have Maywood, we have Lower Maywood, we have Hollywood Hill, we have Queensborough. All of these people have come together, and we're going to spread it out. You know, we're going to go and talk to our neighbors, and we're all asking you, please, stop this plan for now, have us have more input. I know we put in input before, but you're not listening. You're not listening to what we want. That's all I have to say.
Hi, my name is Tony Richter. I've lived in this area for just about 50 years in Bothell. I work for that small corporation north of us here that builds airplanes. My job was primarily code enforcement. And as such, I had a bunch of people working for me. I had fire departments working to do inspections of the plants. I had a good group of people, basically. The thing that, I'm a professional engineer. I watched as the city council allowed a bed and breakfast to be built across the street from me with five people living in a single-family dwelling downstairs to service a bed and breakfast directly above this. Well, as I watched them develop this bed and breakfast, I noticed that they tore out bearing walls, they installed a simple thing called a dryer that was gas-fired, which wasn't vented, right in the hallway, stair down to this lower level. Now, where is the code enforcement that you people are thinking about here? I had to call the city and tell them about this project going on here before I could get any action. Took them six months to get out here and look at it. At one point, they finally red-tagged the facility, that they built a structure that was indeterminate in the back as far as a landing. This thing is ridiculous. It's still red-tagged today. That was a year and a half ago. But had anybody done any code enforcement? No. The same thing applies to the area that I live in. The streets are out of control. I have no traffic control whatsoever. I have speeders up that street at 50 miles an hour for children walking to school, and there's nobody out there enforcing the law. Is that due to the fact that we have inadequate police force or is it lack of whatever? I don't know. But I'm seriously worried about what you're planning. I live on a three-quarter acre lot, and frankly, I won't allow that to be sold to a developer. I'll make certain in the deed of trust that I'll indicate that it can't be subdivided. So thank you for your time.
Juliana Puli Kenmore. Oh, I'm all sideways. I'm a lifelong North Shore resident who's volunteered, worked, and his children attend school in Bothell for years. And I'm a strong supporter of your comprehensive plan updates, and I have four points I'd like to make tonight. First, I want to emphasize that Washington House Bill 1110 mandates more diverse housing, specifically missing middle housing, and HB 1220 mandates more affordable housing. These are state mandates, not at-will decisions that your city manager or city council members have just thought up. And so that means that Kenmore, Kirkland, Lake Forest Park, and all of Bothell's other neighbors are also going to be doing the same comprehensive plan work. All of us are going to be diving deep and all of us are going to be rethinking our zoning and our neighborhood lines. This is not just a hard conversation for Bothell. This is a regional conversation about what our neighborhoods are going to look like moving forward and how we can navigate our regional housing crisis in our broad community. When, I've been in the housing market recently. I'm a lifelong local resident. Sounds like some of you have been fortunate enough to own your homes for decades. I have not been old enough to own my home for decades, and I've been in the market recently, and I will tell you that it is prohibitively expensive. My husband and I both have graduate degrees, and we were priced out of the first home that we tried to buy in Bothell, even though we were offering almost $50,000 over asking price. Last month, the average Bothell home was sold for over $1.1 million, and the average rent for a one-bedroom apartment in Bothell required a salary of $80,000 a year. This is not sustainable for your community. This is not sustainable for many of us and probably many of you in this room. As an adult who's rented for most of her life, I'm offended and hurt by the implication that apartments, duplexes, multifamily homes are less safe than a single-family home or that renters have worked less, have worked less hard than the homeowner who's purchased the real estate decades ago for fashion of the price. Some of us who are trying to buy homes here are not newcomers but are locals who would like to raise our children, the same excellent North Shore school district that we grew up attending. When I think of, number three, when I think of the character of Bothell, I think of the inclusive, family-friendly vibes of downtown, and it's beautiful and progressive, and you've changed a lot, and it's been great. Please carry this over with the optimism that something can change in a big, beautiful way and welcome people when you think of housing. Housing staves, lives, as Amanda Dodd said once, we can buy our house, we can't buy our neighborhood. All of us need to evolve, all of us need to adapt. It can be really scary, but I think we can do it together. Thank you.
Thank you for getting up and speaking because she actually pissed me off because she is, doesn't know what she's talking about. I'm a resident, my name is Janine Hademio, and I'm also in the industry in the business. And I guess that's the developer, the one that doesn't seem to care or pay attention to this. That's my assumption here. I will let you guys know about developers and builders. They get their license, they go bankrupt, and then they just renew and get a new license. So there's always money. There's money being involved with you guys. And honestly, I will tell you that this is, we're not here to tell you guys that we don't want you to live here or to own a home. That's not, I'm a single mom and I bought a house here. There are loan programs out there. It is possible to do. So if that's something you want to do, hey, let me know. I'm in the business, okay? I'll help. But this isn't what, we're not here to tell you guys not to live or to buy a home here. But I will tell you that the apartments that you guys built over by the old Seattle Times, 570 square feet for an apartment, a one-bedroom, $2,700. So you're telling me that you're going to build a house that's going to be more affordable? We all know that this is literally a crock, excuse my French, shit. You guys, that's, these houses are going to go no less than, I'm going to say maybe, what, 600? And that's probably being nice about it. So please don't try to pull the wool over our heads. And if anybody wants to know more about zoning codes, I've been doing this for 35 years, and I'd be more than happy to take this crusade. I want to thank my neighbors for inviting me, and you guys have not been at all transparent. And so where there's smoke, there's fire. You guys are trying to hide something, and so I will make sure that we figure it out.
Sasan? Yeah. Good evening. John Culver, resident and city council member of Kenmore. I want to start actually commending the folks who have shown up to make their voices heard. However you feel about this issue, civic engagement is incredibly important, and the best kind of community discussion is a vigorous one. This stuff matters, so thank you for being part of the conversation and keep showing up. To that point, when proposed changes stirred the community to turn up, especially for the first time, it might feel sudden or rushed. It's a reasonable impression, but there's a few pieces to unpack here. First, as mentioned before, every city is going through this process of reviewing and amending their comprehensive plan. It's on a schedule, once a decade, due by the end of the year, so no surprises here. We've all got to do this. In fact, Kenmore had our public hearing on our housing element just last night. Secondly, maybe just saying the quiet part out loud here, the die is also kind of set for cities in many ways. In response to the statewide housing affordability crisis, which I'm sure everyone in this room is feeling and well aware of, the state and counties have enacted laws over the last several years encouraging and really requiring cities to grow. And kind of bridging these two points together, as every legislator knows, change takes time to work its way through the system. Even when new laws get passed, they take time to propagate, right? So a lot of tonight's comprehensive plan is just responding to policies that Olympia enacted an interval of years ago, which is only just now landing on cities' doorsteps to take action through its planning process. And empirically, the rollout of any change is actually going to feel much more incremental and organic because there's an inherent kind of natural ebb and flow of older buildings gradually getting replaced with newer construction. And when that time comes, some of those buildings might be a little taller or fit a few more units in, say. But for any given neighborhood, we are talking about a span of decades for this process to play out. These things take time. What will the impact be? It will open up more housing, which will help with easing some of the pressure on affordability. At the same time, though, speaking to the money-minded folks who might rightly be concerned about their investments in their homes, even when the day comes that the homeowner decides to sell, you're going to be pretty handsomely rewarded because most all of the research shows that with increased construction potential, these property values are going to go up. I'm hoping that hearing some of this from what a neighboring non-authority figure might be helpful and ideally not too tedious, but thank you for bearing with me if not. So to land this plane, honorable mayor, deputy mayor, and city council members, Bothell is demonstrating that it understands the assignment. Our region is in a growth spurt, and we've got goals to hit, so taking measured steps to gradually open our communities up for growth is how we embrace this moment with leadership and avoid getting bills named after us. You've got my support on this.
Do we have a green light? I guess you can hear me. I can see it. I have a concern that I have all the concerns.
Ma'am, excuse me. If you can, we'll start the timer over. Can you introduce your name for the record?
Okay. Sorry. I'm Jan Sweeney, and I live up off 104th, off of 200. Anyway, I agree with all the people who have said that they oppose the proposed plan. I agree with that. Something that hasn't been brought up is how it's going to affect all the wildlife. Now, we know that Seattle is having an upsurge of coyotes, and we have, we will have that problem also. We also have, regretfully, deer out on our main streets, and they don't know where to go. And I find this incredibly sad, and it'll only get worse. The traffic problem will get much worse. There's a lot of things to be considered. I just got a text from City of Bothell this last week to do a survey on the water, how all our housing in the storm drains are being affected by all the people here. And so I answered the survey by text. I don't know how many people got that, but that is something to be concerned also because with an uptick in massive amounts of property highrises, you're going to be impacting the water quality. You have the slew, the smammy slew, wherever else it goes. And that's all I have to say. I'm ready to go out for treats.
Janine Deprisant? Okay. Thank you. This is my first time at a city council meeting, and thanks to my neighbor who raised awareness...
Sorry, I'm going to interrupt you real quick. Can you state your name for the record?
My name is Divya Nair, and I'm a resident of Meridian Avenue South. So this is the first time for me at a city council meeting, and thanks to my neighbor who raised awareness by dropping a flyer at our doorsteps. Now, I got into housing market end of COVID, that is 2020. For a year, I was outbid from Renton to Redmond to Kirkland. I had to go beyond my budget and buy a single-family home in Bothell. Every town I was outbid has seen an aggressive development since 2000, and still I can't afford a home in those towns, and I don't see rents reducing either. And here you claim a blanket rezoning will bring affordable homes. Who is promising the affordability? The builders? The realtors? Or the city who is going to get the Washington grant? There are no guardrails in place with respect to infrastructure, environment protection, or affordability. Builders or realtors are not charity organizations. With this proposal, they get a free hand to destroy communities. And I'm afraid the people who support this bill will be in for a stark surprise.
Thank you. Mayor Thompson, that's all I have in the audience. However, there are a number of people online, so if anybody online wishes to speak, please use the raise hand function, and I will panel you into the meeting. I'm not seeing anybody. Mayor Thompson.
All right. Well, thank you, city clerk. If nobody else wishes to speak, then I'm going to close the public hearing. And we are going to take a break before we go to our next agenda item about EMS service in Snohomish County. It is 8:08 PM. We will be back at 8:30. All right, welcome back. It's like a different room. Bye. Are you sure you don't want to hear us talk about the EMS levy? Yes. That's what we try to do here. All right, next up is ordinances and resolutions. The first is consideration of adopting an ordinance to increase the EMS levy in the Snohomish County portion of Bothell by 1% for 2025. City manager.
Thank you, mayor. And I am going to pause only in that we don't have the on our air sign on yet. So I want to make sure that...
Oh. Woo-hoo.
Mayor, as you just noted, we are on item 8A, ordinances and resolutions, and this is the first of several items of legislation that we have before you tonight. And I will also note that while this is, this is a special meeting for a number of reasons, but just to remind everyone who might be watching, the council will be adjourning and reconvening, all in one motion, as the Bothell Urban Emergency Medical Services District Board meeting. The finance director will be here to explain a little bit about that, but the context behind it is, is that there is a EMS levy that affects just a portion of Snohomish County. And so by the way that that is set up, the council will act as the EMS levy board. With that, I will turn things, actually, I will turn things back to you, mayor, to convene the EMS board.
All right. I am going to first adjourn the Bothell City Council meeting and convene the Bothell Urban Emergency Medical Services District Board meetings. Welcome, board members. Would Board Executive Standard like to introduce the EMS Levy Finance Director Kwan Wong to present and entertain council questions?
Thank you. No, let's go straight to the Finance Director, Kwan Wong, and this will be brief. I'll also note, well, I think for this and several other actions, there are a number of actions that the board and then the council will be asked to make tonight. And so if so desired, I believe the deputy mayor may still have a script to be able to help be the person who makes the motions. So just for note and the flow of the meeting and to help people know which item we're on, the deputy mayor or the vice chair of the board will be prepared to read the motions tonight. With that, I'm going to turn things over to Kwan.
Thank you, Kyle. Again, good evening, board president and EMS board members. So tonight, we are going to ask you to act again as Bothell Urban Medical, Emergency Medical Services District Board to approve a 1% increase in the EMS levy covering the Snohomish County portion of the Bothell for 2025. A little bit of history, just to remind the board members. The Bothell Urban EMS district was created in 2005 to fund... The Bothell Urban EMS District was created in 2005 to fund emergency medical services in the Snohomish County portion of Bothell. The City of Bothell residents who live in King County pay for EMS through the King County EMS levies. The 2025 budget assumed the EMS levy is increased by 1%. So with that introduction, we are going to ask you to act with a motion to adopt the proposed 1% increase.
Board Vice President?
I like it.
Because my only goal here is to not screw that up, just so we're all clear.
I move to adopt an ordinance to increase the EMS levy in the Snohomish County portion of Bothell by 1% for 2025.
Second.
I have a motion from Board Vice President, the Board Vice President Al Cabra, and seconded by Board Member Dodd. Wouldn't anybody like to speak to the motion? Board Member Alderks?
I'll just say it's good to save people's lives, and I'm glad we can help fund those efforts.
No, I'll just say the same thing. I love that this gives us a chance to treat our entire community equally when it comes to emergency service, and it's a big no-brainer. All right, Board Clerk?
Thank you. Please say yes or no when I call your name. Board Member Zorn?
Yes.
President Thompson?
Yes.
Board Member Alderks?
Yes.
Board Member Kurd?
Yes.
Board Member Manke?
Yes.
Board Member Dodd?
Yes.
Vice President, Board Vice President Rami.
Yes.
Vice President Al Cabra?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Can we get him a name tag that says Vice President Rami? Like, because that'd be great.
Passes 7-0.
All right, thank you, Board Clerk. I am going to adjourn the Bothell Urban Emergency Medical Services District Board meeting and reconvene the Bothell City Council meeting. So all of you, you guys were the only people here that got to see that board meeting tonight. And Terry, I appreciate the fact that you're still sticking around. All right, now, we are going to move away from the Board Finance Director Kwan Wong to the City Finance Director Kwan Wong for consideration of adoption for an ordinance to increase 1% of the 2025 property tax levy rate.
So thank you. Again, good evening, Mayor, and Deputy Mayor, and City Council members. So tonight, we have a series of actions in front of you, asking for your consideration. So this is to give you an overview, and we need to go through each item and be entertained by a motion, and we'll ask for your vote. So just to give you an overview, tonight, we will be asking you to consider adoption of the following items or groups of items. First is the 1% increase for King and Snohomish Counties' property tax levy plus new construction in 2025. We're going to ask you to make amendments to the Budget Stabilization Fund and Comprehensive Financial Management Policies. And the last group of items belong to utility rates for the 2025, '26, and technical amendments. To give you kind of an overview, we have been before you to present many of these items, but to refresh your memory, so the first group of items is to ask for your vote on the 2025 property tax levy in King and Snohomish Counties. We're asking you to increase that by 1% plus new construction. The second group of items belong to the Budget Stabilization Fund and Financial Policies. The first item is to ask you to rename the Budget Stabilization Fund and then update the comprehensive policy. Next will be the utility rates. For the '25, '26 utility rate increases, for water, it is going to be 6.25%. For sewer, it's going to be 4.25%. And for storming, surface water, 5.75%. And the last group of amendments would belong to fire hydrant maintenance. We are switching from a tax to a rate base. And then asking you to make amendments to the Bothell Municipal Code Title 18. So the first set of actions, and perhaps we will go through that item by item. So the first item is to adopt the ordinance to increase 1% of the 2025 King and Snohomish County property tax rate plus new construction.
All right, I am going to call for Deputy Mayor Al Cabra to make a motion in just a second, but for anybody who happens to still be watching, these are things that we have talked about in depth in prior meetings, and these are, this is the cherry on top. So this might seem like we're doing it willy-nilly, and these things have all had quite a bit of consideration. Deputy Mayor?
I move to adopt an ordinance to increase 1% of the 2025 property tax levy rate plus new construction for King and Snohomish Counties.
Who wants to do the seconding for these motions?
Second.
Perfect. I have a motion from Deputy Mayor Al Cabra, as he read, and a second from Councilmember Alderks. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Councilmember Alderks?
No.
Councilmember Dodd?
Thank you. I am clarifying this because this became a hot topic during Snohomish County's recent budget discussion. It is a 1% increase of our portion, the city's portion, of property taxes, not an overall 1% increase. That's been discussed before, as the mayor said, but these nuances do matter. So just for anyone hearing this for the first time.
And 1% of 20% is 0.2%.
Excellent mathing.
Thanks, Windows.
Deputy Mayor? All right. City Clerk?
Thank you. Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmembers Zorn?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks?
Yes.
Councilmember Kurd?
Yes.
Councilmember Manke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Al Cabra?
Yes.
Passes 7-0.
All right. Deputy Mayor, about comprehensive financial management policies, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, sir. I move to approve an ordinance repealing the 2020 Comprehensive Financial Management Policies and approve a resolution amending the Comprehensive Financial Management Policies.
Second.
I have a motion from Deputy Mayor Al Cabra, and a second from Councilmember Dodd. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Deputy Mayor? No. City Clerk?
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmembers Zorn?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks?
Yes.
Councilmember Kurd?
Yes.
Councilmember Manke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Al Cabra?
Yes.
Passes 7-0.
Fantastic. Deputy Mayor, regarding the Budget Stabilization and Council Opportunity Fund?
I move to approve an ordinance renaming the Budget Stabilization and Council Opportunity Fund to the Budget Stabilization Fund.
Second.
Ooh, Councilmember Manke, coming in hot. I like it. I have a motion from Deputy Mayor Al Cabra, and a second from Councilmember Manke. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? City Clerk?
Thank you. Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmember Zorn?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks?
Yes.
Councilmember Kurd?
Yes.
Councilmember Manke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Al Cabra?
Yes.
Passes 7-0.
So if I may, I think we still need to pass the resolution to adopt the updated comprehensive plan. You repealed the comprehensive plan that we adopted in 2020, but we need a resolution.
I said approve the resolution amending the comprehensive. I said repeal that 2021, and I said, and do we need to do it in two motions? Or one? It was in one motion?
I think we need two separate motions.
Tell me, I can move again for it. I mean, it's okay.
Counsel, this is Silene Kiefer. Have my video off. Let's just do two motions. A clean record here. We do have an ordinance repealing and a resolution adopting, so if you don't mind, we'll just do the two.
Okay.
It's my recommendation.
Thank you.
I will also just clarify for those watching, I think our Finance Director was listening very intently during the public hearing tonight, but what he did mean to say is the comprehensive financial management policies.
Yes.
Oh, I got.
Not the comprehensive plan.
That's my.
We are not adopting that tonight.
My brain in. Okay.
We have a real busy meeting next week, next time, if we did that.
I move to approve a resolution amending the Comprehensive Financial Management Policies. That's what I said, approve, amending the comprehensive. I don't understand, I don't.
So first, you have to repeal it?
I did that.
Oh, we did that.
And I said the other one, but then it sounds like I needed to.
So we need to do both of them separately?
From what I understood from our city attorney who chimed in is that, well, just to make sure that there's no confusion, we'll separate it into two different motions. So we did, you did adopt the ordinance, you read the motion correctly, and we're now adopting it so that it'll be, the ordinance was repealed, which the council voted on, and now this will approve a resolution.
So I said approve resolution.
Correct, you got it.
Only one more.
Somebody has a second now.
Second.
I have a motion from Council, or Deputy Mayor Al Cabra, and a second from Councilmember Dodd. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Seeing none. City Clerk?
Thank you. Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmembers Zorn?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks?
Yes.
Councilmember Kurd?
Yes.
Councilmember Manke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Al Cabra?
Yes.
Thank you. The resolution passes 7-0.
Thank you. All right, we're going to skip past the budget stabilization because we did that. I would love a motion for water, 2025 and '26 water utility rates.
Do that, okay. I move to adopt an ordinance for 2025 and 2026 water utility rates.
Second.
I have a motion from Deputy Mayor Al Cabra, and a second from Councilmember Alderks. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Seeing none. City Clerk?
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmembers Zorn?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks?
Yes.
Councilmember Kurd?
Yes.
Councilmember Manke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Al Cabra?
Yes.
Passes 7-0.
All right.
All right, Deputy Mayor?
I move to adopt an ordinance for the 2025, 2026 sanitary sewer utility rates.
Second.
I have a motion from Deputy Mayor Al Cabra, and a second from Councilmember Dodd. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? City Clerk?
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmembers Zorn?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks?
Yes.
Councilmember Kurd?
Yes.
Councilmember Manke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Al Cabra?
Yes.
Passes 7-0.
Deputy Mayor?
I move to adopt an ordinance for the 2025, 2026 storm and surface water utility rates.
Second.
I have a motion from Deputy Mayor Al Cabra, and a second from Councilmember Kurd. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Seeing none. City Clerk?
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmembers Zorn?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks?
Yes.
Councilmember Kurd?
Yes.
Councilmember Manke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Al Cabra?
Yes.
Passes 7-0.
Deputy Mayor?
I move to adopt an ordinance to reallocate water distribution business tax.
Second.
I have a motion from Deputy Mayor Al Cabra, and a second from Councilmember Dodd. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Seeing none. City Clerk?
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmembers Zorn?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks?
Yes.
Councilmember Kurd?
Yes.
Councilmember Manke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Al Cabra?
Yes.
Passes 7-0.
Deputy Mayor?
I move to adopt an ordinance amending municipal code Title 18. Come on, nobody wants to do it?
Second.
I have a motion from Deputy Mayor Al Cabra, and a second from Councilmember Zorn. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? City Clerk?
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmembers Zorn?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks?
Yes.
Councilmember Kurd?
Yes.
Councilmember Manke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Al Cabra?
Yes.
Passes 7-0.
All right. Thank you. Next up, we have the 2025, 2026 allocation for the Regional Crisis Response Agency budget. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. The city manager's stall time while people bring up their presentations does not work as well when the city manager is giving the presentation. If you'll bear with me, I will bring that up really quickly.
We could ask Laura to talk for a little bit while you get.
I know, I should delegate that, actually. I had warned our deputy community development director that he was in the city manager's seat so that he would be doing the presentation himself, but he didn't take me up on it. All right, well, good evening, council, and I'm pleased to be with you tonight to go over one of the elements of what will be part of the overall budget that you consider next month and most likely next week. Tonight's focus is to provide some information and then to you, but so that you then can consider a resolution, which will be sent to the Regional Crisis Response or Racer Agency. The purpose of that is that we are a member of a group of five cities who belong to the Racer Response, and in our inter-local agreement with each other to fund Racer, there is an agreement that by December 1st, cities will provide a resolution showing commitment to the next biennial budget contribution. So that could happen either through adopting the budget before the end of November or passing a resolution. So that's what we're here to do tonight. Really, this commitment then shows that Bothell remains committed to being one of the five principal agency members, as well as that we commit to including adequate funding for our portion of 2025, 2026 budget. In addition, there was also some questions that were submitted to council way back in October when we were first starting off on this journey, and it's been in the Q&amp;A tracker that we would come back on November 19th, which now turned to November 26th. So here to address that as well. What I want to make sure that is also clear is that by passing this resolution tonight, it does not actually adopt the budget or any part of it. It really does just show, again, it's a communication back to our partners that we are committed to the next two years. I will also just note for clarification that the required funding is, in fact, included in the proposed budget that was transmitted to council for consideration. Moving on to council action, then, if it wasn't clear, is that we do have a requirement then, as I mentioned, in our local agreement. And so the action specifically tonight will confirm the allocation of funds for 2025 to '26 operations for Racer in the amount of $433,104 for 2025 and $472,651 for 2026. Moving to some of the questions that council had, and it's kind of a good opportunity to say, how are things going? This was information that was shared with the Principals Assembly, which, as you'll recall, also in the inter-local agreement, there is a commitment for each principal city, of which we are one of the five, to name one of the city council members and/or an alternate to come to a, in the first two years, three times a year, Principals Assembly meeting, and then in subsequent, after two years, it'll be once a year, to provide updates on statistics and how things are going. So we did get that update recently. What you'll see on the slide above is then the data that is available from Racer for 2023, for the City of Bothell specifically, is that in 2023, there are documented 158 individuals that were served. I'm noting then that this data is combined for the year between the radar program, of which we were previously part of with four jurisdictions, and then Racer when it was formed in June 1st, going forward. Also of note in this is that while individuals were tracked encounters and the Bothell-specific referrals were not tracked and reported by Racer at this point, you may recall that we also had a different transition in November of 2023 when the City of Bothell, as well as the City of Lake Forest Park, switched our dispatch service to Norcom. So that is part of where you'll see that 2023 was still in the formation stages, and we're now going forward, 2024 and onward, there's more data. and onward, there's more data. So for 2024, January through October is what reporting was available, is for individuals, it increases to 318 individuals were served in Bothell. The encounters, so that could be multiple individuals, were served more than once. There was 970 encounters. Also in that number is you'll see the Bothell Police Department referrals. What that means then is that if there was a, an encounter that took place that Bothell Police was the first responders, when they said, we need a racer response for this, this is more, this is one where we would, we would look for a racer to come assist or to take it over. A couple of things of note on that is that, doing some quick math, if we look at the data across Racer, it, the percentage there is, overall officer referrals is about 12% system wide, and in Bothell, it's 15%. So we are, we are on track, if not a little bit ahead of having our officers identified when a different resource is needed. And then also just to give some background on what those cases are of where, I think, you know, as council would speak to better than I, because you've been, you've been following this from the days before I was, was here, is, is looking at things that again have previously, there's been, who is the resource to call, and it's not police and it's not fire. So who does it go to? And it's racer. So that includes suicidal threats, behavioral health instances, and additional events where just behavioral health is suspected. That includes, yeah, I have some more information on that, but I think you, you probably track. Jumping then to the overall demographics, so as I mentioned, there's more information that we had, we saw specifically to Bothell. So this is then system wide of what we're seeing within our region. And I think as we know too, is that the need for these services doesn't know borders, and that is where our regional approaches really speak loudest. And so one of the questions that has often come up with our, in our partnership and at principals' assembly meetings, is knowing really how is the spread proportionate to population? How is the response? And I think it's important to always be careful with this number, because it's not like we want to hit a quota of where good means that we're right on track. This is really telling us though of how balanced are things. And again, at, at some point, we might see that the percentage is higher in one city than the other. Overall though, if we're taking the regional approach, what we want to make sure is is the right resources getting to the right need. And so this, this breaks down again, though, what you would see in terms of individuals and encounters, and then the percentage of the totals. So hopefully that is helpful. Specific then to the budget overview of what is being requested from Bothell, I wanted to highlight really the changes from what we saw in the initial two years of operations, and then what we're seeing from what's being asked of from Bothell. So the primary drivers of the changes overall include, there are three LTE, so limited term employees, that are funded through a grant. So not an ongoing funding source, but a grant funded source, which is a subject for consideration once that grant runs out. So as we've thought about for our own budget, you have, what is the budget and then what is the revenues? So there's some, the, the expenses are higher, but there's also revenues that offset that expense in this case. So there's a, three positions that are 100% funded by a grant from the Washington Association of Sheriffs and Police Chiefs. In addition, with that then, that turns into there's currently 13 total responders out in the communities. And so when you start doing that math of we're providing, they're providing 24-hour services, the, the model that was created at its inception didn't really, didn't really fit the need in that there was only one supervisory position for all, for all 13. And so the backup to the one supervisor was the executive director. So we had people who were really stretched. And these are, these are calls, especially at all times of the day, where we really want to make sure that there's a supervisor there to help with some of the more complicated situations. So there was a proposal, there was a few proposals that were given to the board. What we have recommended as, the board is the executives of each of the five agencies, was adding one new FTE to be a second supervisor. So there'd be two supervisors that could cover all shifts. And then also looking, these are not new positions, but promoting three current responders to lead positions to also help fill that leadership role. What I'll note is that when you look at this overall, the other increases that are, are part of this include cost of living, inflation, benefits, but also then there's also some decreases in terms of, we're getting real costs of operations. So background checks, they're not hiring as often as they thought. They're, actually, the retention of the employees has been pretty high. And so background checks, which is substantial, is, is gone down, as have overtime expenses, because they have been able to go to the 13 positions. So, and then also what I'll note is that the addition of the, the promotion of the three leads is generally equates to about $10,000 a year. So pretty, pretty good value. And again, supporting people who are out doing really complicated work. So that's the overall. And then as I mentioned in the introduction, what the cost breakdown is per year of the city's total cost allocation. As a reminder, the funding for this is coming out of a levy that, that the, the community approved for, for public safety, and it did include alternative response. So we're grateful to have the resources to, to support that. With that, that concludes the presentation. Wanted to give again some brief highlights to council for consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions that I can and/or take notes and get a written response to you.
If nobody has any questions, I would be happy to accept a motion. Deputy Mayor?
I move to adopt a resolution allocating funds for the Racer 2025-2026 budget in the amount of 433,104 and 472,651 respectively, and in conjunction with the Racer interlocal agreement.
Second.
I have a motion from Deputy Mayor Alcabra and a second from Councilmember Alderks. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Well, I'm gonna real quick. I'm just so excited to see that the amount that our community is using this is going up. It's really cool to see that. You know, the, the usage is pretty consistent across all the different jurisdictions. It's nice to hear the employee retention is really good. Like, thanks, Brooke. We appreciate you if you're watching. And I mean, with the, with the new crisis care center in Kirkland, this is just something that I'm incredibly happy we can provide as a resource for our community and our police department. City Clerk?
Thank you. Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmembers Zorn?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks?
Yes.
Councilmember Kurd?
Yes.
Councilmember Manke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Yes.
Passes seven zero.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have a resolution approving the 2025-2026 state legislative agenda and companion policy manual. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll stay here for introductions, and we are joined online by Shelley Helder, our wonderful resource for state, state legislative support and state lobbyist from Gordon Thomas Honeywell Government Relations to present and entertain council questions tonight. Just as a reminder, council has the opportunity to review a draft of the legislative agenda as well as the policy manual. We had a study session at the end of July. We did intentionally then hold approval or adoption of both until a little closer to the end of the year, but ahead of the time of where you may then begin having conversations with our delegation from Olympia. And so with that, there are always things that are changing and shifting. We will accommodate for some of that also during the session by providing updates to council. Shelley does an amazing job of providing weekly updates in written form, and we will bring updates as needed to council meetings to make sure that there's clarity. Overall, these are documents that will help guide the conversation of what is the Bothell City Council interested in. And so it, it helps narrow down when there's thousands of bills into the ones that are most impactful for Bothell. With that, I'm going to turn things over to Shelley to lead us through. And Shelley, thank you for joining us last week and again this week, and we really appreciate your support.
Thank you. I'll do a quick sound check. Make sure you can hear me. Great. Okay. Well, it's good to be with you all this evening. Glad to see that everyone survived the storm. As the city manager mentioned, we, I was before you all in July, and we did an initial review of the city's legislative documents then. And since then, there have been several changes. And so I, my plan to make is to review those changes briefly, and then talk about the updates that have been made to the city's draft documents, and then be, be prepared for any questions. I, I don't have any slides this evening, so it's just, you know, gotta listen really well. So the first thing that I want to update everyone on is not going to be news. We've had an election, believe it or not, and we now know who the next governor will be, as well as several other statewide offices. We also now have a better idea of the budget context. There were three initiatives that would have had really significant impacts on state revenue. All three of those initiatives have failed, and so now we have a better understanding of what the budget picture is. Revenue, we have, we have recently updated revenue projections for both the cost and, and revenue for the upcoming biennium. And I think the simplest way to say it is that it's going to be a difficult budget year for the state. The Office of Financial Management, which is kind of like the accounting department for the state, has estimated that the budget shortfall over the next four years is going to be between $10 and $12 billion. And that's important to note, because while this, while the state is obligated to adopt a two-year budget, it has to balance over the four-year outlook. So that four-year outlook really, really matters. Several of the state agencies, after they submitted their budget requests, were asked to go back and make cuts to their budget in order to accommodate that shortfall. Some of the agencies were asked to cut as much as 25% of their budget. So given that, that reality, we know there are already discussions about what new revenue may be needed. So it's likely to be a conversation about both what cuts need to be made and what new revenue needs to be raised in order to fill that gap. So that's the budget context for the operating side of things. On the capital budget, it's, the capital budget is primarily funded through the sale of bonds. And so it's, it's still going to be, you know, the budget, budget's still going to be there. Those revenues aren't going anywhere, but the capital budget in recent years has been really heavily augmented by one-time federal funds. And, and those federal funds are not going to be there in this upcoming cycle. And so the capital budget will not be as robust as it has been in years past. But of the three budgets, it is still probably the best budget and to have a promising chance of securing funds through. We are also hearing that the decline in, with the decline in transportation revenues, there's roughly a $200 million gap in the upcoming biennium in order to honor the current commitments. So the transportation budget plans out its projects over an eight, sometimes 16-year outlook. And so for this upcoming biennium, they already know what their obligations are, and they're $200 million in the hole, and we haven't even started. So there are conversations about new revenue, both revenue that would be focused specifically on transportation needs, but then also broader conversations about new revenue that could potentially address both the operating and the transportation budget challenges. And I'm confident we're going to learn more about those ideas in the coming weeks and months. So transitioning now to talk about the city's legislative documents, and we have incorporated the feedback that you shared and have an updated agenda and policy manual that is in your council packet. The, the document has tracked changes, so you can see what all of those edits were. I don't, I don't plan to go line by line through those edits, since we've had discussion already about each of them. But I do want to note that the, the agenda bill for this evening has two additional topics that are being proposed for the council's consideration. The first is incorporating a statement regarding corner stores. I do expect there will be legislation to increase opportunities for neighborhood cafes, is how the state has referred to it. Corner stores is another name for it. And given the council's discussion on this topic during your comp plan update, we are recommending incorporating a reference to corner stores into the current statement on incentivizing development. So I want to note that, that this statement on incentivizing development, it's a statement of support for policies that incentivize development, not mandate certain city actions. So this statement, with this statement, we would not, we would not necessarily support a bill that preempts local land use decisions, but we would express the city's desire for local incentives. And, and the council can give direction to support a specific proposal at, at a later date. I just wanted to make it abundantly clear, at this point in time, the statement on incentivizing development would not be direction to support something that preempts locals, local decisions. The second topic that I want to mention is, in light of the state's budget situations, situation, we, we know that there is going to be new revenue considered. And in reviewing the city's policy manual, I noticed we don't have an explicit statement about revenue sharing with local governments. And we have statements that talk a lot about the city's position on city revenue, but nothing addressing state revenue. And so the statement that's being recommended for incorporation is a statement that would allow us to proactively engage in efforts to direct new revenue to local governments. So those are the changes that I wanted to highlight for your awareness. But before I turn it over back to you all for discussion, I do want to mention some key next steps. We are scheduled to meet with First District legislators on December 19th to review the city's legislative priorities. That's a really important, important step in the legislative process, is to equip our local legislators with the information of what we're, we're hoping they will be able to accomplish prior to session beginning. The legislative session begins on Monday, January 13th. That Wednesday, on January 15th, there will be a governor's inaugural ball. And it is, it's an event that only happens every four years, and it didn't happen the last time around because of COVID. So it is a really popular event to attend. It is open to anyone. The attire is formal, and tickets are on sale. If you are interested in attending, and want, want to attend or want to know more about it, let me know. I will be there. The rest of the GTH team will be there, and we would be happy to, to spend the evening celebrating, celebrating democracy. As was mentioned previously, I do provide weekly written reports during the legislative session. Those are going to be focused on the city's top priorities, as well as updates on legislation that are issues I know the city cares about, based on what you have provided in your policy manual. If there are bills introduced during legislative session that there's not clear guidance on, or there's, there need, there additional council discussion is warranted, we, myself and city staff are going to do our best to get time on your meeting agendas, so that there can be a discussion about legislation in a timely manner. So with that, I will stop there and see if there's any question.
Councilmember Alderks?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for being here and talking us through this. In trying to follow along, I wasn't able to find where the neighbor, I call it neighborhood retail, corner stores, whatever the other names are for it, but I, like neighborhood retail is, is what's kind of stuck with me. Where is that mentioned in the policy manual?
Now that I'm saying it out loud, I'm, I'm recognizing we did not incorporate it into the policy manual intentionally. It is included in your agenda bill as a recommendation for consideration. The only language that's incorporated into the draft policy manual is direction that you all gave us at the last council meeting. So the, the two changes that we are now recommending are not. So the, the two changes that we are now recommending are not incorporated yet. So that's the direction that we're looking for from you.
Okay, I, I thought perhaps that might have been the case, but I just wanted to verify. So thank you.
Yeah.
Or questions right now?
Are you just questions? Are you looking for uh council's um input on adding these two things?
That's a good question. If there are no questions, then I'm looking for your input on the two items that are included in the agenda bill.
Can I leap in? I, I always appreciate your thoroughness, Shelley, so thank you so much. Um, yeah, I, I support both of these, adding these, both, both of these items into our policy.
I have a couple of comments, if nobody else is doing anything. Um, the um, in terms of the incentivized development, um, I would like to word that in a way that doesn't just have one or the other, that gives us the flexibility to support bills that both mandate local governments to do things and incentivize local governments to do things. Um, so maybe something like pursue policy that results in increased housing opportunities or something like that? Is there a, is there a way we can wordsmith that to uh allow it to be interpreted as both?
I, yes, I think we can wordsmith it to do that. Um.
Yes, there's broad agreement.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, a hundred percent.
I'll jump in here. Kyle Sander, City Manager, I think what would uh be helpful is to get enough uh uh feedback from council members that somebody feels comfortable making a motion. At that point, if the motion suggests amended language, that would be part of the motion to say to, what to include, and then with the motion as second, there could always be editing. So it's always helpful, though, if there's feedback before the motion's made. It's a little bit easier procedurally for the council to navigate through, but once the motion's made, then it would be, be looking for a second and then conversation and potentially an amended motion. So I would just say, before that happens, like, we now have heard from the mayor of that suggestion there, if there's other thoughts on what you'd like to include, um, this would be a great time to do it.
One other thought that I have before I cede my time um is in, in the corner store, um, right now, we have it as a permitted use in medium-density residential zones. Like, can we just have it in residential zones, in all residential zones, even if it's lower density? If somebody wants to start a corner store there, like, I don't see why that would be bad. So those are, I guess, the two, the two questions that I would, that I would like council to kick around.
Mr. Mayor, I don't want to brag about being tired, but for your first feedback, can you give us a page number of what you're looking at?
Um, page number four eighty-two, under the incentivized development.
So we're scrolling.
What I'm saying is that we should just say, instead of support incentivizing cities, something like support increased zone density. Like, we know that housing isn't just a purely Bothol issue, and if all of our neighbors do good things for housing, it's good things for Bothol.
Thank you, and sounds good to me.
Thank you, Mayor. So the first question is pursue, you said housing?
Yeah, uh, however we wordsmith it, I mean, that's what we're talking about, is housing. Basically, the question is, do we want to only support policy that incentivizes it, or do we want the flexibility to support policy that mandates it from the state as well?
Uh, are you talking about corner stores or housing?
Housing, for the first one.
Oh. Yes?
Okay.
Can, can you explain to me what you mean by mandating the state?
So basically, how this is written right now is it's only for incentives. In something like House Bill eleven-ten, that was not an incentive. That was the state saying, you need to do this, and we supported that bill. Um, and I think it was a good idea. And if there are similar bills that will cause more housing opportunities in neighboring cities and Bothol for our residents, I would like to be able to support those as well.
Thank, thank you for the clarification, and, and so it's, it's making sense to me now. So that's why you're saying support support policies.
That result in increased housing opportunities or increases on density, however we want to wordsmith it.
Okay, and so are you comfortable with removing incentivizing? Because that would be kind of wrapped up in the supporting policies?
I mean, I'm fine with however it gets worded to accomplish the goal. I, I don't care how we get there.
And as you contemplate that, councilmembers, just for um, for tracking purposes, I believe the mayor, when he cited page four eighty-two, he is looking at last week's packet, which is, that's in totality. And if you're working off of the packet that was posted for today's meeting, he's referring to a statement in the middle of the page three thirty-nine. It's the recommended uh language for corner stores that exists within the current council policy manual as written is incentivized development. In your agenda bill, the bold language is what was being proposed around corners, neighborhood corner stores. If you uh, if, I think what the mayor is suggesting is a revision that would cover all of the things then that are, uh, after that colon. If you were looking for that language in the totality of the policy manual, you're going to find that on um well, let me find it, but it's uh within, within the, the policy manual itself. And that would be pound page three forty-five of the current packet. And four eighty-eight last week.
You said three forty-five of the current?
Correct. You'll see that, uh, it, it stands out in the current. If you go to page three forty-five, there's a red line of for the word zone and then foster transit-oriented development. Those were added in the study session that council held in July.
Yeah, so it's just the incentivizing word is still the we could just say support policy that increases and go from there? And that would give us the ability to cover both?
Does it? Does incentivize have a special meaning that?
Yeah, it's usually like, if, it's usually like, if you do this thing, then we will give you the carrot.
So if you remove the word incentivize, does that mean you won't get the carrots?
Well.
An incentive, like, an incentive would be a policy that would fall under the broader umbrella of policies that increase zone density.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
Like, it basically just removes a specific and allows us to get at the big picture in more ways than just that one.
Yeah, you're broadening it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Couldn't you just say incentivize or creates? Da-da-da-da-da-da. And then that covers the vagueness of whether incentivization is part of the picture or not?
If I was being very quibbly, then I would wonder about the definition of the word creates. But probably.
They um chiming in, I think, the important thing here is that the policy manual gives direction to the staff and keeps council on the same page. So as long as it's clear to you, I think we can interpret what you say, so. If, from the wording of it, making sure that there's, there are seven people on the dais in online that understand it is the most important thing.
So, yeah, so if we just say, you know, broadly speaking, we want to be able to support policies that include incentivization or in, I'm not going to try to say that word again, and um, and mandates, like, we you guys could work something together, and as long as we all understand what we're voting for up here, we can give you direction to write something like that?
Yeah, we would look for a motion that said specifically what you want it to say, and then, again, we can always, we can always, along this journey, if you want to give us alternative direction, again, this is your document, so absolutely.
So just checking in, uh, the way I'm taking this discussion, and, and what I mean is we want everybody to have a, a threshold that they meet, so that we're all doing similar things, and nobody's growing outpace with what's around them. But then I would see incentives as, on top of that, if you can offer more housing with some kind of bonus for building, you know, the infrastructure less piecemeal as it happens, or, or whatever it is, incentive to do more. But I, I, I guess I wouldn't want communities that think, eh, we're fine without the incentive, and we're not going to do anything within the urban growth area to, to do that. So is that kind of where we're all?
Broadly speaking, if a policy increases the amount of housing capacity, I would like us to be able to support it, regardless of how it gets there.
Yeah, like, within reason, I think, within the UGA for me, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
I have a proposal.
Okay.
I'm reading this. Um, support policies designed to increase zone dens- density in cities, including incentives.
Perfect.
Cool.
Good.
That will be part of the motion.
Say incentive, including incentives?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Anybody have any problem with that?
I, I had my hands up because uh Councilmember Curd was, had his hand up, but I suspect his lowered hand means he supported Councilmember Aldrich's proposal.
I will take the quiet as confirmation. There's Councilmember Curd.
I am in agreement with Councilmember Aldrichs. That's a great way to word it. Thanks for doing this by committee.
Councilmember Aldrichs?
You ready for a motion?
I'm ready for a motion.
Okay, hold on. I gotta find something.
As you prepare the motion, uh, remember there's two items too, so I think there was general agreement on the funding one, but you'll want to, you'll want to work that into your.
Okay.
Ooh, but.
Give me.
Okay, so this is going to be a motion for everything, not just that thing.
You can, you can, you could, you can move to amend the document for the first, first. Yeah, that's, that works, if you would like to include this.
Because there was one other thing I wanted to talk about too, but let's, we have wording that works for that, so let's get that out of the way and then move on.
That's, okay, we can track.
Okay, so I motion to amend the state legislative agenda and companion policy manual to include support policies that, um, sorry, support policies designed to increase zone density in cities, including incentives.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Aldrich, and a second from Councilmember Dodd. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Deputy Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Just a question, I should have asked it before, but here we are. Uh, just a question for the experts. Uh, does that make sense? Shelley?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it, it makes sense, especially because I've got a chance now to hear your discussion and understand what your intent is with it. So, yes, thanks for asking.
All right, cool, thanks.
City Clerk?
Thank you. Please say yes or no when I call, when I call your name. Councilmembers Orrin?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Aldrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Curd?
Yes.
Councilmember Manke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Al Cabra?
Yes.
Passes seven-zero.
All right, I guess my next question is, does anybody how, the, the medium-density language is awkward and weird to me, and I don't know how that gets defined, but like the neighborhood corner stores, does anybody have a problem with that being in all residential zones?
No. No problem.
Would somebody like to make a motion to that effect?
Okay, I think I got this. I motion to amend the state legislative policy agenda packet um to allow limited commercial uses in all neighborhood zones in the incentivized development section.
Second.
Okay, since you seconded, is that the question? Is that what you intended with the?
I think so.
Oh, Shelley has her hand.
Shelley?
Yes, so I just want to make sure that I'm understanding. I understood the last motion to modify the incentivized development statement in, in totality. So, or, or was it just the, the, was that intended to be like a preface to all the other items listed in that statement?
The preface.
The preface, okay, thank you.
Mayor, um, for my clarification, in the proposed language that's in your packet, what I'm seeing is allow limited commercial uses in neighborhood zones?
It's also possible that I was looking at the old um, the old packet, and that has changed since then, and um I am not seeing that language in this packet.
It's on page three thirty-nine of our agenda, or four eighty-two at the bottom of the page. And so I did include, I included the word, the word "all" to reflect what your stated wish was about neighborhood zones. So like, I, I, I both motioned, and Shelley, tell me if I'm wrong. I both motioned to accept Shelley's wording with the, the addition of the word "all."
Y- yeah, I mean, so I'm looking up under, here in the packet, and it's possible that that was explanation like on a couple paragraphs higher on page four eighty-two, where it says um as a permitted use in medium residential zones. Um, and I would prefer that to be "all."
Yes, so the, I believe that language is referring to what was directed in the comprehensive plan. So that was the lang, from the comprehensive plan, it was what, what's currently in there, and I recognize there will be further discussion, but was in use in medium-density residential zones. So that was the opening paragraph. The, the, the suggested language does just say in neighborhood zones.
In that case, I do not need this motion. So would you like to withdraw your motion?
Are you sure you don't want "all" in there?
I don't care.
Okay, I withdraw my motion.
I don't, I don't know that it matters, but um, hot tip, uh, I got an idea for our next comp plan discussion.
Can I, Mayor, just ask a question?
Yeah.
I, I believe my understanding, the reason why our, our comp plan draft says medium-density zones is because we actually have to look to the state to allow us to do more than medium-density zones? Is that, or am I wrong?
No.
We're waiting on guidance.
We do, we do have our experts here. I think part of this was, from what I recall, and I'll be tested on my, on my recall. Uh, part of that is, is in terms of that we do have to, there's other factors that go into the comprehensive plan to make sure that everything works. So including things like modeling. So there's some assumptions that are made in terms of what trip generation looks like and that sort of thing. The staff recommendation was to do it in medium-density zones at this point, um, because that is consistent with what has been modeled for the comprehensive plan. So instead of having to go back and undo work that has been, that was theoretically pens-down in the summer, that's where we landed at. You are correct in that we, uh, in the last update and conversation on this, the community development director mentioned that the Commerce Department from the state of Washington was coming out with guidance on corner stores, commercial retail in neighborhoods, anything you want to call it. And so there was also the, the desire of, let's take a look before we then put it into our code. So the comprehensive plan will accommodate, and then we need to come up with a code that changes that will implement it, and that was going to come in twenty twenty-five after the guidance. So it's kind of two concepts, but you're absolutely right. There was intention in that language in the comprehensive plan to make sure that it was still consistent with the modeling and what we've had to turn in already. So there's, there's some things that, again, we, we, we do have, we have to uh have already submitted to uh other agencies. That was the, that was the consideration there. Doesn't mean that it can't be changed later.
And so what you're saying is that um code amendment process in twenty twenty-five could allow, like, once we get that guidance, there, there could be a process to align our legislative policy manual with the comprehensive plan? Or at least the attention, the intentions behind them?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I understand, I understand what you're, what you're saying. There's no requirement to align our legislative policy with the comprehensive plan. Just that, I think that was the one part that I would pause on, but um, again, the, what would, what was written for the legislative agenda and policy manual was an attempt to capture what we had heard as the strong feedback for the comprehensive plan, which was understood to say in neighborhood zones, right? So not of medium density. So if there was a bill that was at the state that would accomplish commercial stores in neighborhood zones, the city would have direction to sign in to support. That's the intention of this language.
And I think in our comp plan, that's probably a better discussion for a different day in terms of how we can. day in terms of how we can get that if we as a body want to do that.
But, but definitely it's a sign of that we heard, we heard the sentiment of, of the voices of the council in discussion of the comp plan. And that's what triggered the proposed language change here. Again, as, as Shelley mentioned, we do anticipate that there will be bills, perhaps plural. And so, um, we, we heard the interest of council loud and clear.
All right, if anybody else has any edits that they would like, or if nobody does, then a final motion?
Mayor, I think we, um, we also have not included the other question about economic conditions, um, around if you would want to clarify in the policy manual that if the state considers new revenue sources, Bothol requests a local revenue sharing component be added to the policy manual. So you don't have to add that, I just wanted to flag for process standpoint. Currently, the policy manual does not say that if council would like that, we would need to amend a second time before you take up the full motion.
Okay, so we are done with the incentive development question? And now the question is, do we want to take a piece of the action if the state does something? I, I don't see why we wouldn't want to pursue that if that happens. I mean, it's not like we have a printer in the basement, as I keep saying, either that or we use Bitcoin.
If I am following correctly, and Shelley, please tell us, tell me, uh, if this is what you'd like to hear, um, would you like to hear a motion that accepts the edits that you proposed around commercial uses and shared revenue sources?
I think we only need a motion around, um, shared revenue.
I think we withdrew the previous motion about commercial use.
No.
Okay.
So.
No.
I'm sorry, Laura. I, my apologies, I'm probably overstepping our city clerk, but because I followed this document pretty close.
Laura's like, I'm good fam. You, you do your thing.
So far, what you've done is there was a motion to add, to amend the language to say supports policies designed to increase zone density, including incentives, dot, dot, dot. The mayor had then inquired about, because he was looking at a preceding paragraph around medium density zones. He was asking if there'd be consideration of not limiting it to medium density zones. However, the language that you've added didn't do that and that motion was, was drawn. Those are the two considerations of motions that have been made. A potential then, so there's only one motion that has been made, seconded and approved. The, the question before you then is, is before you adopt, if you would also consider adopting a change, amendment?
Sure.
With the second language about shared revenue?
Yeah.
And then there's also anything else that you'd like to change, of course. I don't want to limit you, but that is the, the question that I, that I flagged for consideration.
I'm, I do not, I want to be particular but not persnickety. So I don't, I don't think we have yet approved Shelley's edit around limited commercial use in the incentivized development paragraph. And so if I were, if I were to, like, if I'm understanding correctly, if I were to make a motion, it would be, I would motion to approve Shelley's edits to the incentivized development, uh, paragraph as well as the shared revenue sources in economic condition.
We, we are, we are done on the shared revenue sources and we just need the economic, oh, yes, we're done on the first one and we're not done on the second one.
Can I make?
Please.
May I make a motion?
Councilmember Dodd.
Okay. Feel so much pressure. Um, I move to adopt the draft legislative agenda as amended tonight. So what's in there plus the amendment we made?
Plus Shelley's edits.
Which are in there.
For clarification, and again, this, it's fine, you can, you can move forward that. As it currently stands, you have not edited to include language about state revenue sources. If that's.
Sorry, I'm, I'm looking at the bold text, that's why I said that, the draft that has the bold text. So I have to, okay, so I.
Yeah, it hasn't been included, this, neither of the proposed changes were included in the draft. We didn't want to change anything that you hadn't considered yet.
So this is a non-draft draft?
Just move to include the phrase.
I moved to include the phrase, if the state considers new revenue sources, Bothol requests a local revenue sharing component into our legislative agenda.
Legislative policy.
Legislative policy manual. Do you want me to say it all over again? Okay.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Dodd and a second from Councilmember Zorn's. City Clerk? Actually, no, would anybody like to speak to the motion? Please say no. City Clerk?
Okay. Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmembers Zorn?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks?
Yes.
Councilmember Curd?
Yes.
Councilmember Manke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Al Cabra?
Yes.
Passes seven zero.
All right, thank you, Council. We, clarity is achieved. So now what you have is a policy manual that includes the two changes as amended. Any other changes completely? The floor is yours or you may consider adoption of the legislative manual, uh, policy, policy agenda and, and the legislative agenda in the policy manual.
I would, uh, love to accept a motion for approving the state legislative agenda and companion policy manual.
I move to adopt a resolution approving the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six state legislative agenda and companion policy manual.
As amended? As amended?
Second.
I have a motion from Deputy Mayor Al Cabra and a second from Councilmember Dodd. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? City Clerk?
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmembers Zorn?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks?
Yes.
Councilmember Curd?
Yes.
Councilmember Manke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Al Cabra?
Yes.
Passes seven zero.
Thank you very much. Shelley, thank you very much. I'm sorry, that probably took ten minutes longer than it needed to, but thank you for bearing with us.
Thank you, appreciate the direction.
We'll see you soon. All right, and with that, I'm going to adjourn.
Happy Thanksgiving.